We are reconvening our Planning Commission meeting of September. I gotta check the date there. Twenty-second? And we are discussing the appeal 2016-482, denial of commercial cannabis cultivation registration application for Mr. Orozco. Yes, Ben? You... I think we left with you, Commissioner Stotter.
Yes. I'm glad we had lunch. We're starting to get a little rise out of what the laws were, and I do have respect for Chris Williams' knowledge. And right now, thinking back on it, it's pure speculation as to what the State Water Resources Control Board does or will make on their final decision on the issue of a permit or riparian water rights. And until they do make that decision, it's just speculation on which way they would go. But to go on, you know, so at this point, I see that you do have surface water way in there. But until the State Water Resources Control Board does make their decision on the permit, we could go back, banter back about and forth about it all day. And the State Water Resources Control Board has the final say when it comes down to it, so... That's all I have to say about that.
I'll say, I have a, you know, going to the very first issue about the requirement for a recorded deed. You know, I think that the... To me, the language "recorded deed" is pretty plain and unambiguous. And it could be, even though property transfer legally might happen at some close of escrow, I would think that the intent of the board was that a recorded deed is easily searchable. So it's a way to be, to verify the property ownership versus close of escrow and not recorded yet. How do you know? How do you find out? I mean, it's a, it's a easily way to verify property ownership. So to me, that's the first issue, you know, before getting into the, you know, where the, was the ordinance met? Conditions of the ordinance met? And I, I don't think so.
If I could add a couple of comments briefly, then we need to hear from the public on this. I agree with what the chairperson just said. The ordinance requires a recorded deed in two different sections. And there has to be a reason for requiring a recorded deed. And a recorded deed has to prove the ownership, not something else. The recorded deed has to prove it, as of May 10th. And the only way that can do that is if it bears a recordation date prior to May 10th. And this one doesn't do it. On the water situation, the ordinance requires a description of the legal water source to be used for irrigation. And the question is, what does that mean for purposes of this ordinance? Now, I am willing to assume, as Mr. Williams tells us, that that legal water source could be riparian. And that 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 legal water source could be riparian prior to the time the state board passes on it. But if, as Mr. Williams tells us, the riparian use is only for reasonable domestic use. Now, the question is, is irrigating a marijuana garden a reasonable domestic use for purposes of this ordinance? And the theory seems to be, well, it's an agricultural use, and that falls within reasonable domestic use. Now, the question is, does this ordinance mean to include as a reasonable domestic use irrigation of marijuana as an agricultural product? And when I read the ordinance as a whole, I find two references to agricultural marijuana. And the ordinance says that, notwithstanding what state law may have to say for other purposes on this subject, cultivation of cannabis for medical use shall not be permitted in any zone unless it complies with the requirements of this chapter. And cannabis cultivation cannot form the basis for entering into a Williamson Act contract, which is only for act. Reading the ordinance as a whole, it seems to me that medical cannabis cultivation is not treated as an agricultural activity. That means it does not fall within the category of reasonable domestic use as riparian right. That means there has been no demonstration of a legal water source under the terms of the ordinance. That's my tentative thinking on it.
Let me just add one other thought to that, is that this is a commercial, a license for commercial marijuana. Commercial is not domestic, the way, and the way I would define those terms.
I would agree with that.
So I had several things. One is the GIS mapping and the complaint that what the county is using isn't correct. I do feel that it is any appellant's responsibility to survey their land. The same as if a contractor were going to build a house, or put a septic or a deck, whatever you want to do. It is the landowner's responsibility to survey that land and to show proof that their their commercial business is on their property, not somebody else's. Nothing gives you a right to plant on somebody else's property. If you do that, you've done it at your own risk, not at mine, not at the county's. So as far as the GIS mapping, if it's off, that is the best source that we have. We have been handed this regulation to deal with in a very short amount of time, using the best tools that we have available to us. So I really feel it is the responsibility of any appellant coming forward to bring a formal survey and show us their commercial business is on their property, not somebody else's. The grant deed? I struggle with that one. I know that the ordinance point-blank says, and I said I would vote black and white by the ordinance, that it needs to be recorded. In my profession, I do know that if you have a grant deed, you have ownership. It does not have to be recorded for ownership. So that's something that I really struggle with, because it tells me that person owns that land. That's a tough one. But the ordinance does state it has to be recorded. I understand that it makes it easy for the county to be able to research it and be able to look at it and say, yes, this person owns it. But when looking at that, if the applicant had said, I didn't get it recorded by May 11th, but I'm gonna submit you my grant deed to prove ownership the same as I would a lease, I think that that would have been a more complete application in this process. The ordinance, when it talks about the riparian rights, I'm gonna fall right along with the other commissioners here in the fact that it is for domestic use when you have or using that water. The appellant has not been able to prove to us that they have riparian rights. That would have made this job a little bit easier by bringing forth that information to us. And the state hasn't ruled whether it's legal or not for them to be using the water. So the verbiage in the ordinance states legal use of water. That could come in January, that could come in February, but for right now, I don't have proof of that. And I think it would be irresponsible for our county to say, go ahead and use that water. And then the state turns around six months from now and says, you didn't have access to that water. That puts some liability on us that I don't really wanna take on. So that's my few cents.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm more interested in the water situation, I think, than some of the other things. And that's because from everything I've heard, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but everything I've heard is that marijuana takes a lot of water. And if all you had was enough for a reasonable domestic use, I think you'd have to have a very small garden. So from that standpoint, I don't think that that, I don't think that stands up.
Okay. We do need to hear from the public. Is there anyone else that hasn't spoken that would like to address the Planning Commission on this appeal?
My name's Chris Irvine. I'm a Realtor with RE/MAX in the country. Concerning riparian rights, they do go with the property. I believe, looking at the topo map over here, is that the stream they're talking about is on the left, which is on the wrong parcel. Once a parcel becomes divorced from the original parcel, it loses all riparian rights. Riparian rights are specifically for domestic use and not for agricultural use, that's appropriate rights. And it also prohibits the storage or diverting of water for dry seasons.
Thank you.
Marty Crane. I just wanted to step back to the deed and the ownership portion. About 25 years ago, I retired from 20 years of escrow in Orange County. And as an escrow officer, I was an impartial third party. And I was charged with, as all escrow officers are, we are charged with holding on to documents and reports and funds and holding them in trust until, until every aspect of the valuable consideration has been met. That doesn't mean that we don't send the loan documents and the grant deed and all the other deeds and things that might be necessary in that transaction over to the title company for them to review ahead of time. They may get them three to four days or whatever ahead of time, giving them time to review and make sure. And also, as an escrow officer, I may send those things to them and say, for your review, but we're still waiting. I'll let you know when we're ready to fund. And then we would call for funds. So I can, I appreciate what you said, Kelly. The, and I, and I think that the question here is, was there an escrow? If there was an escrow, it's black and white, cut and dried, it's the date of the recording. But I also appreciate what you said, Lisa, because sometimes people will sign a deed over to someone without an escrow. And, but they may also have a bit of an agreement and say, for convenience, you know, I'm gonna trust that you're gonna do this or that, whatever. And, but this is, you know, you record this after, after you do this, or whatever. There's all kinds of things that people would do. But it gets a little gray there. So I think for this purpose, the first question is, was there an escrow? If there was, then, then it's easy. I was, I had this all clear in my mind how I was gonna address it, but then you've each touched on it a little bit here and there. But anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Robin Peters. I'm with Cal State Engineering. We're located in Jackson. I'm a registered civil engineer. We employ licensed surveyors to do the various things that we do. Mr. Orozco retained Cal State Engineering on June 17th to survey the property, and in fact, we've surveyed it twice. Wants to establish the boundary between the two parcels that he owns and to determine how the existing cultivation area fits within those boundaries. And then, once we had the results of that survey, he retained us to survey again to establish where he needed to move his grow operation. Because in fact, our surveying determined that the boundary between the two parcels bisects his cultivation area. Part of his cultivation area is on, I don't know the AP numbers, the left-hand parcel, the parcel to the west. And part of his cultivation operation is on the parcel to the east, which I believe is AP number 06. We've submitted documentation to the Public Works Department that demonstrates that as part of his grading permit application. So I apologize for not having an opportunity to bring this up earlier, but I appreciate the opportunity to do it now. Boundary between the two parcels does in fact, it is not as shown on this slide. It is actually farther to the west, and the upper terrace is in fact on parcel 06, which I believe is the parcel subject to his registration application.
Did you, did you bring a map with that?
I have lots of maps, yes. Gina, do you? I have several that may be more clear than the grading plan. The grading plan is pretty complicated because it shows future grading. We actually prepared an exhibit that shows the existing situation more clearly. And Gina, I'm happy to give you my copy of that. It's all the same information, but the grading plan is rather complicated, and this exhibit is a bit more clear.
Any questions to Mr. Peters?
I should add, if I may. When we identified the problem with the property boundary and the cultivation site actually spanning the property boundaries, and in recognition of the reality of the setbacks, Mr. Orozco directed us to start the process of the boundary line adjustment, to eliminate that boundary altogether and make it all one piece. And we haven't, we haven't completed that process yet, but we're working on it as we speak, so... Can I answer any questions?
Did Judge just submit the application?
Not yet, no. We're still working on the application.
I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone else in the public that hasn't spoken? Okay, Mr. Williams?
Chris Williams. I couldn't disagree with your comments more. I'm looking at the ordinance, and one of the things that it says in 1795-130D, nothing in this chapter is intended nor shall it be construed to exempt the cultivation of marijuana from any and all applicable local, state, or federal construction, electrical, plumbing, land use, water rights, wastewater discharge, stream bed alteration, or any other environmental building or land use standards or permitting requirements. Now, I don't know whether you consider it a car wreck, but I think when, several years ago, the county decided to require a showing of, quote, "legal access" before you could get a building permit, there were a lot of land people that said, this is not a good thing. This really shifts the balance of power in a lawsuit to anybody that doesn't want you to get a building permit. Because legal, what's legal? Well, they define legal as you have a granted easement deed for access, or you've gone to court and you've gotten a court order granting you access under prescription or implied rights. So there are all these people. And Calaveras County, there are so many roads that are used, there are so many undeeded easements, that it really has created a lot of problems. When you try to find, define what is a legal water source, first of all, that is a state jurisdictional matter. Water rights are a state jurisdictional matter. They're not for you, for you to determine. And Laura can tell you more about it. And I, I thought we might take a little breath here and all think about these issues for a while, because one thing that's gonna happen is the state is looking at a, carving out a special set of water rights rules for cannabis growers. But to respond to one thing that was said, well, we don't know if you have a legal water right. You don't, when you, when you are a riparian user, the reason they want you to report is because, for two reasons. They wanna know, they wanna give the public the opportunity to know you're doing this. And for somebody who's downstream, or someone else who thinks they're being impaired by your use of that water. So it gives them an opportunity to come and complain. But there isn't a permit issued or a license issued for a riparian right. It's the same thing. How do you prove it's legal? You have to go to court, and your neighbor have to sue you, some other riparian has to sue you and get a court order that says, your use isn't legal. It doesn't work that way. So if you say that a riparian use of water to grow cannabis in Calaveras County is not legal, well, then you just wiped out a, everybody who uses a surface supply, just bam. And it's not within your jurisdiction, I don't think. In looking at the ordinance, I'm looking at 17195-165.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
Just to kind of clarify this. We're sort of going by your definition of a riparian user, which is, or riparian rights, which is reasonable domestic use, right?
Yeah, that's a state law.
Okay. So don't, do you find a difference between domestic and commercial use?
I think-
I mean, this is a commercial license.
I think in this area, it is maybe, maybe not clear, maybe it is clear. I think that's one of the things, this new regulation or statute, whatever the Water Rights Board is gonna do, is gonna come out with. They, they define marijuana use as agricultural use. So then you're getting down and you're skimming-
But that's not the way, that's not the way it's defined in, here in-
But that's-
Calaveras County, all right?
All we can do is speculate on it.
But it's a water right. It's a water right.
Yeah, so I'm just saying you're-
You can't determine the legality of a water right.
But you, you are. I mean, you-
No, I'm not. I'm saying who has the authority to do it.
And I don't wanna argue with, I'm just saying that, you're saying that it's your interpretation that growing cannabis is considered a reasonable domestic use for riparian rights. Is that what you're saying? No, no, I just, no, no, Mr. Williams.
No, I'd like, no, I'd like her to speak to that. I'd like the person who may know more than I do to speak to that.
Well, okay. I'm just asking you to verify what you said.
If it's under a half an acre, yes, it's, it, it can be registered with, it's on the north coast, in Minassino, Humboldt, Trinity Counties, all other counties, if it's under a half an acre, they are permitting cannabis farms.
Is that written into the ordinance?
I don't know what's written into the individual ordinance, but with the water board, a half an acre, you have to report, you have to report your water use. You don't permit it. If it's over, if you divert over 10 acre-feet of water a year, then you have to permit it. You have to get an appropriate right. But if you divert less, and none of the cannabis farmers that I've permitted in any of these counties have diverted over 10 acre-feet of water, unless there's a pond involved.
So you're saying in the north counties where you're familiar with, that-
I'm familiar with law here. It's all the same. Water rights laws are the same in every county.
So, but what you're saying-
From California.
So then, under what you've just described, is that growing cannabis under an acre is considered a reasonable domestic use?
Under half an acre.
Under half an acre. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So the other issue is this ownership issue, and I just... The purpose behind that requirement can only be one thing. It's to demonstrate that you either have ownership or you have a right of occupancy. If the law says that delivery of a grant deed, someone gives them ownership, it's ownership. You haven't said a thing about the, the paper I handed to you from the former owner who said, I gave him the right to occupy the property back in October of 2015. There's another indication that he had the right to, but what's it about? It's about ownership or right to occupy.
So can I ask you another question? Did the appellant include the deed in the application?
The deed is in the package.
Pardon?
There's a grant deed-
In the application.
In the registration packet.
Okay.
But, but not the letter of authorization from the previous landowner.
No, no, I'm talking about this one. This part, I'm, I'm not really listening to, I'm just sort of focusing on this applic-
There's a grant deed-
In, in, in Mr. Orozco's application.
Yes, which was-
Not the recorded one, but the one that demonstrated he had ownership of the property. Did he include-
Recorded deed?
Yes, an unrecorded deed in the application. There's no unrecorded deed in this application?
No.
So what's the deed got? It's the reported deed?
Yeah. Which shows a date after. Right, so I'm just saying if he had a deed, that he didn't include the, the unrecorded deed that showed ownership of the property. Was that in the application?
Is that part of your registration application?
Yeah, it was part of the registration.
You had the grant deed showing that you had ownership, that you were-
Yeah, we turned it in.
You have it?
I have the recorded grant deed.
No, the unrecorded one, which would have been, it's-
Oh, oh, oh.
That would have shown-
By the time he filed, though, he had ownership recorded May 11th.
No, I know, but there's this whole discussion about escrow and that, what was the date that escrow closed and he took title to the property?
He took title to the property in March.
Yeah, March.
But they didn't run it through escrow until after he got the grant deed.
And you have a date stamped on that?
He owned it in March by the grant deed, but they took it through escrow after that, which closed on May 11th.
So what I'm asking is-
No, escrow closed on the 4th.
So what I'm asking is, did he-
Deed wasn't recorded till the 11th.
Oh, May 11th, excuse me, yes.
Did he include a copy of the grant deed showing ownership?
Yes.
In the original application?
I believe so.
I don't know. Do you know? Unrecorded!
No, I don't have the deed that's unrecorded. The grant deed showing ownership that was submitted with the registration packet is the actual recorded grant deed that was recorded on 11th.
Okay, so we don't have-
I don't have anything regarding escrow. I don't have, there-
Or a grant deed.
The grant deed was multiple pages, and there are signature pages with dates that reference dates prior to May 10th, but what all of that means, I don't know.
So if he had filed his applicant registration on, say, June 20th?
Right. He would have had, given the-
He would have had the recorded grant deed that was-
Unrecorded grant.
No, the recorded one stamped May 11th.
I looked at it.
Right?
So they actually signed the documents back in March.
Right.
According to the recorded grant deed, but it didn't, the deed, the grant deed itself did not record until the 11th, which was after the deadline. So I guess the confusion is, are we going to consider escrow to be, the close of escrow to be that our past date of ownership, regardless of what the ordinance says?
It's, again, I would emphasize that it's, what's the purpose of the provision? The purpose is to show that the registrant either has ownership or the right to occupancy. The ordinance says either, must provide either a recorded deed proving the registrant's ownership or a signed and dated lease demonstrating his rightful law possession. He's furnished both of those things now.
Yeah, and the reason I didn't turn in-
I'm sorry, please state your name again for the record.
Jose Orozco. The reason I didn't turn in the, a permission from my, the seller, is because I was under the impression that I owned the property. I have the deed of trust. So I didn't turn in the lease from my seller because I, nobody, even the planning department didn't think I needed it, because I was the owner of the property. And my other owner, which is my cousin, I also had a consent from him to do all this. You know, if I, if, you know, they would have said, okay, your deed didn't, didn't, whatever, then at that point, which we still had plenty of time till the 30th, I would have went and got that letter from the old owner and just said, hey, could you write me the letter that says that I was allowed to be here since October? But even the county department accepted all my paperwork and my money as the owner of the property on the day that I took that, turned in the money. There was plenty of people that were there getting turned away, but they took my money, my packet, and said, we're moving forward. my packet, and said, "We're moving forward."
You did own the property. That's not, that's not up for discussion in my mind at all. You owned the property when you applied.
And that's exactly why I didn't produce more, more proof of me supposed to be in there, because like you said, I own the property.
The problem that you're faced with is that the ordinance is specific in its language, and that's why I wanted to take a break and go read it. It says it had to be a recorded grant deed.
Yes.
You had a grant deed, you had ownership, I mean, I guess you should have written yourself a lease.
Well, I was trying to do everything legal, not like everybody else that you guys turned away, trying to turn in fraudulent stuff.
I mean, he had written himself a lease, he could have been perfectly fine, because-
Well, I turned in the lease now.
He has the lease from the prior owner.
As of last year, I was, you know-
But that, that lease isn't valid because he didn't own the land, you did, right?
Yeah, but you're saying that I didn't own it prior to the tenth, and he gave you permission-
No, no, you owned it.
Okay, well-
You flat out owned it the minute that grant deed was put in your name.
Obviously, we all understand that, but the lease of me giving permission to be there, you know, that's why I didn't turn it in. And if that's the case, then why can't we look at that now, that it's right in front of you guys?
Because I think that, the issue that we're being faced with right here, right now, in my mind, is that we have an ordinance that we read, we vote on, do you qualify, do you meet all the guidelines in it? No, you don't. There's some language in there, and Mr. Williams likes to tell us we can vote on intent, and we can determine what was meant by this regulation and, you know, make our decisions. My position has always been, I didn't work on this regulation, I didn't vote for it, the supervisors did, and some other folks. So when it comes to needing to get to the bottom line of intent, I feel you need to go to the supervisors, that's just my own personal opinion, because they know what their intent was. I don't.
Thank you. You know, there's, there's some sloppy language in here. I mean, you see the words, "No later than May tenth," you see "prior to May tenth," you see "as of May tenth." And, I mean, even the staff report, Gina's staff report says that the document was recorded on May eleventh, two days after it should have been. So what is it? Is the close of business on May tenth the deadline? Or is it close of business on May ninth? I mean, those kind of things you just have to look at and try to make some sense out of. Yeah, it was recorded on May eleventh, but that's just because somebody at the title company waited that long to go down and record it. I mean, I, I just, I think it's commonsensical that the purpose of that requirement is to show you had ownership, he's shown you, he had ownership. There is a lease, I saw a lease.
We handed it to him.
Oh, you-
Do we have that?
No, I thought, I thought we had, we don't have an actual lease.
Could you come to your conclusions, Mr. Williams?
No, I'm not sure I have.
I, could you? Would you?
Yeah, I would ask you to reconsider. You got a guy, I mean, the county encouraged people to do this, to put themselves out, to spend their hundred grand, to try to follow the rules, and you all are trying as hard as you can to find something wrong and to deny. I mean, you're reaching for things. When you start reaching at, "What's a legal water right? Is this okay? Is water in a tank okay?" You're reaching for reasons. Don't, why don't we try to look for the reason behind the ordinance, which was to bring people out of the dark, make things transparent, I mean, cut some of them a little bit of a break.
Right, and so how many approved licenses do we have? Some of the neighbors, seven hundred or something licenses that we've approved?
Well, we haven't approved any yet. We have seven hundred and-
Yeah, there's not one permit issued, is there?
That's correct.
No permits issued. Have you all granted any appeals?
Not yet, we haven't.
Yeah. Okay, I don't think I have anything left to say.
Thank you. So, back to the planning commission.
Well, I just can't get over the hump that's the ordinance sets before us, where the registrant must provide either a recorded deed proving the registrant's ownership of the parcel prior to May tenth. To me, that's pretty clear. It's, it's a deed, it has to be recorded, that deed itself has to prove the ownership prior to May tenth. The obvious way you do that is record it prior to May tenth. That didn't happen. And, I mean, I understand that he may well have owned the property prior to May tenth, depending upon when the delivery took place, and I understand that if escrow closed on May fourth, he would have owned the property on May fourth, when the deed was delivered. But that's not what the ordinance requires, and I don't think I'm stretching when I read that language and say, "It's got to be a recorded deed that itself proves the ownership." To me, that's pretty clear. On the water right issue, I don't know what other counties consider domestic use. I'm not sure I'm willing to follow the lead of places like Humboldt and Menocino County on these issues. This ordinance says legal water source, and I've already given my reasons why I don't think that this irrigation of commercial cannabis is a domestic use or even an ag use, and I haven't heard anything that caused me to change my view on that.
Prior upon May tenth, I mean, it does say multiple different words inside here, but the fact is, it wasn't May tenth, it was May eleventh. So, prior upon, you can question those words, but you can question it all day. May eleventh is when it was recorded. The property boundary, that could be resolved. As it comes to water rights, I do have to agree, the State Water Resources Control Board is the sole regulatory agency when it comes to that. So as to of now, we can only speculate as to what that would be, because they will write it down the way they write it down when they write it down. And that's all I have to say about those three things.
I have a lot of things to say. I think when I look at Robyn's map that he presented, the garden is a single continuation. And if you are within seventy-five foot of a property line, you're able to move it to make it within your boundaries. And if he was allowed to move this garden back onto his lot and get that seventy-five feet, I think there's some wiggle room in there on that, because it is a continuation of one garden within the twenty-two thousand square feet. I think that he was the owner of the property, and he could have just written himself his own lease and been, because of that one day, had he written himself a lease and submitted it with his application, it would have been complete. It's not complete, but it could have been. I, I'm struggling with this one a lot, and I haven't struggled on any of them, just so you know. The one issue that, that I would like to correct you on is that you say if it's under half an acre, then it can be resolved. This is not under half an acre. This is over half an acre. So, there's no explanation to what happens when it's over half an acre, and I'm not a water person, so I don't know.
It is a half an acre.
Twenty-two thousand square foot is a half an acre.
Forty-three, five, sixty is an acre.
It's a four acre.
I'm sorry, right, so cut it in half, twenty-two thousand is more than half.
No, that would be, it's, it's less than half.
Forty-three, five, six, forty-four thousand-
Twenty-two thousand is over half an acre.
Forty-four thousand would be half twenty-two. Your forty-three, five, sixty is an acre, so you're over half an acre.
Well, they're saying that I'm only nine thousand square foot, though.
Okay, but you applied for twenty-two thousand square feet, you intend to go to twenty-two thousand square feet, and that's what your water rights should be, correct? It's over half an acre. So I don't know how that works out, I'm not, I'm not a water person. I know my numbers, though. So anyway, I, I'm bothered, because I don't know what the state's going to say about your water rights, and that's an issue. I mean, it's a real issue for our entire county, being under these drought conditions that we are, but you're not, I give you credit for not draining someone else's well dry, because we've seen that and heard about it a lot. I personally, I almost wish there was a continuance on this until we could see how the state rules, because I think on the other issues, we could work around them, abandoning the lot lines, moving it over. I think that he could come into compliance with his registration, but the water holds me up. So I don't know what I'm doing.
Now I just helped you, didn't I?
Yeah. But you admitted you didn't know what you were doing.
That's the first time I've done that, huh?
Right.
Cool.
The, for once, I'm kind of on the other side of the fence, I, I'm inclined to favor Mr. Orozco's claim because of the fact that the water issue is so kind of in between, and the, to even talk about a year's supply of water really doesn't mean anything, because it's a seasonal business, you know, and a short season at that.
A lot of them are running year-round, they're doing mixed.
Yeah.
So, no, it's gonna be year-round.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of Mr. Orozco's appeal.
Oh, hi. Like my fellow commissioners, I am really sympathetic with Mr. Orozco. I mean, it really seems like he's trying to do the right thing. Proceeding with the survey and, you know, the grading permit, but, or I should say, and the, I feel like we really are, as Lisa said, implementing an ordinance. We're not interpreting an ordinance, we're implementing an ordinance. And I, the, the struggle I have is that the language about a recorded deed, it's not ambiguous, it's really plain, and it's really simple. I think if there is interpretation about what the intent, and does that mean it could show other kind of ownership, it doesn't have to be recorded, is not our call. I think that's really the call of the authors of the bill, which is, or the ordinance, which is the board of supervisors. And I would not feel comfortable making that, you know, I think it's, the language that they wrote in that ordinance is clear. You know, whether they meant to say something else, and it meant to be broader and include other kinds of documentation, I don't know. But I feel bound, because I don't think it's ambiguous, is to, is to, did it meet the requirements of the urgency ordinance, and it's clear it didn't. I'm sorry, no, the hearing's closed. Thank you. So, the, I, I'm with you on, we need to follow the ordinance. I, I think this one really needs to go to the supervisors and get the interpretation of their intent on it.
Is that possible with the same appeal, or would they have to file another appeal?
They have to file another appeal.
They file an appeal with the supervisors.
So they would have to pay another five hundred dollars and file another appeal.
We're getting some consultation over here.
Love to hear it.
Are you suggesting, like-
I wasn't sure if there was a means in our code to allow the commission to simply defer it up without taking action, and, and-
Is there?
And I'm not sure. I thought I asked you, you didn't know either.
I mean, I don't have all of the Kanaka memories. I'm pretty sure I have not seen anything that says that the planning commission can decline to rule and then have, it goes automatically to the board. I think that the planning commission is, you know, it certainly, the planning commission could continue if it wished for more research, that would be within here. I don't think that's going to solve the issues, at least that I have.
Well, the problem with continuing it is that he's not going to get a report from Water Resource after January, according to that letter.
Well, and also, I, I'm sorry, I also don't believe that, that, my, the critical question for me, that's, I can't answer that. Further continuance isn't going to answer that.
We've already submitted our-
Excuse me, sir.
I, I think it needs to go to the supervisors.
So I recall in the past, I don't know that it was on an appeal, that we have, that the commission has just moved it on up or recommended that the board take this on. I don't know, you know, if that's the situation.
Well, I'd be willing to make a motion of such, and I'll take the slap on the back of my hand if-
Oh.
Can, can we go on to the next one, and then maybe have somebody research whether we're allowed to do that before we make a final decision? Sure. I think that's to be the best thing to do, is to just wait. Today. Yes. But if we could go to the next appeal while somebody looks up whether that's an acceptable procedure or not, might be more- Yeah, I can go back and my, I mean, I'd like to sit with the commission for the next appeal, I can certainly go back to the county council's office and ask another deputy to research. Okay. Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, I think that, is that all right with you guys?
Sure.
Okay. All righty, so we are going to put this appeal on hold.
Table it to the next, any next item?
We're going to table it, and then we are going to hear the next hearing, which is twenty-sixteen dash ten forty-six, Appeal of Planning Directors' Denial of Commercial Cannabis Cultivation Registration Application, twenty-sixteen dash nine four one, for APN zero zero eight dash zero two five dash zero seven two. Gina?
Which one is this table?
Okay. Now you have before you get another appeal by Auctions and Naples, appealing the planning directors' petition to deny registration two thousand sixteen nine four one. Reasons for denial, no lawful possession of property prior to May tenth, inadequate evidence of cultivation, absentee prior to May tenth, in addition to, there's a history of co-violations on the subject property not directly related to the registrant himself. So tackling the unlawful possession issue, the entire registration packet was executed signed by Mary B. Jeff, which upon further investigation, come to find out, Mary B. Jeff does not own the property. So quick claim deed nineteen nine eight seven three six, seven two, quit claim the property to Virginia Jeff. Virginia actually died in May of two thousand, for which she did not have a trust or a will subsequent to that. No one has challenged the property ownership through, through probate court. So the property is still legally in the ownership of the estate until otherwise figured out, and therefore, Mary B. Jeff does not have the legal right to act on behalf of the land owner. So, given that there's no legal ownership of the property, so Mary B. Jeff cannot grant the right to the registrant to cultivate. Second reason was evidence of cultivation prior to May tenth. This is the subject property, actually, the subject property is, is three separate legal parcels, but the area of concern is just kind of related to these two parcels here. The registration was, was registered on APN zero eight zero two five zero seven two. Register, they registered a total of ten thousand four hundred and forty square feet of outdoor cultivation. As you can see, there's no evidence of cultivation on this photo that happened to be dated, actually, the photo was, was, was taken via satellite on, which was the June third date. So there's no evidence of cultivation on the property, and no evidence of preparation or development- So there's no evidence of cultivation on the property and no evidence of preparation or development under the purpose of cultivation. So the site plan submitted in the registration clearly shows a garden, uh, location, which again, it indicates there's a locked, it says locked door. Uh, there's a perimeter fence, um, illustrated here. And if you'll notice, there is nothing in, on the site, um, the site photo that illustrates any of this existing. Photos that were also submitted with the registration packet, uh, shows a dump truck driving up the road. Again, no evidence of cultivation. If you'll notice, the dates, um, they're actually from the prior year, which, um, the registrant did verbally, um, indicate that he had been previously cultivating on the property in the last grow season. But there's no evidence via photographs of that cultivation taking place at that time. And if you'll notice, I, actually, there's a, um, two whole lines through the date. But the date on these photos don't seem to match the actual photo, so I have to question when the photos were taken. Maybe not just the time, because it actually indicates that the photos were taken at like 2:00 AM in the morning. But the sun is clearly shining and there's shadows clearly passing. So there seems to be an issue with that, um, with the date and time of the photos. Again, same thing, I see a bunch of graded area, but I don't have any indication as to where that is in relation to the actual property. And if you'll notice, again, the aerial photos that we have access to don't illustrate any of this type of grading taking place. Uh, dump truck dumping dirt. In addition to, I'm not exactly sure what this is, it looks like it might be some tree removal. Again, all from, uh, May and June of 2015. Um, so based on the evidence that was submitted, both primary and secondary evidence, we're not finding that there, um, there is any arcore evidence of actual cultivation on the site at the time in which they were supposed to be cultivating. The last issue that we had is a outstanding code violation. Again, um, not directly related to the registrant, this is strictly, um, against the property and the property owner. But there's been a long history of, um, construction without a permit, junk debris, junk cars, improper sewage disposal, in addition to unlawful, uh, use of a recreational vehicle for permanent occupancy. Um, co-compliance department has been working with this particular case for a number of years. They've issued, uh, some citations, warrants for abatement. Um, I'm unclear at this time as to whether or not all of those violations have been abated. I do believe that there have been a portion of them that have been abated. Uh, the co-compliance was unable to attend the meeting today to verify, uh, what exactly is happening as of today on the property. But we do have a recommendation from the co-compliance department for a recommendation of denial based on these outstanding, or I should say, history of violations. Yet another picture of an unlawful structure, more junk and debris. Uh, again, as stated before, secret does not apply to projects that are rejected or disapproved. So there was no, uh, secret document relative to this other than a notice of exemption. And of course, the staff's recommendation is to deny the appeal.
Just to clarify that, um, no, notice of exemption was filed, but this is considered a ministerial act. And so secret doesn't apply to the ministerial act as well, so... That was, I think, part of, it was included in each of the, um, the resolutions, that, that statement, just to make sure that's, that's clear.
Any questions at Gina?
Yes. The staff report suggests that this, um, application was submitted on July 11th. Is that correct?
July 11th?
It does, yeah.
So this was one of those applications that, that came in the very last day. We did not have time to process, then we accepted the application, accepted the package, gave them their receipt, contacted them and said, you know, come back when we can process this. And this was, we actually carried over until the following week, uh, the 11th or 12th was the last day that we, um, took in applications. But they submitted their paperwork to us on the 30th. We just didn't process it until that date and accepted the, the fee.
Gina, is there any evidence that you've seen that Mary E. Jeff was ever appointed personal representative of the estate of Virginia Jeff?
According to the assessor's office, no.
And there's no evidence that she ever received, that is, Mary E. Jeff received the property as a distribution from the estate, correct?
Um, again, according to the county records, no. There's, there's, there's no subsequent recordings of anything, um, other than that one grantee, um, that I illustrated in the packet. Um, in addition, the assessor's office has confirmed that the ownership of the property is actually still in the estate. Taxes have been paid, so I guess it didn't constitute us kicking it out for any other reason. But, um, as far as, as far as the county is concerned, Mary E. Jeff does not have any authority to act on behalf of the landowner.
On the issue of code violations, the ordinance uses the phrase, "a history of local sanctions, fines, or penalties." Now, is there something that has happened that falls into one of those three categories, or have there just been something less than that?
Well, again, I was hoping that co-compliance would be here to speak on, on that. They happened to be out of the office the week that I had to put my packet together. I managed to rummage through their files trying to put things together. And, um, and basically what I came up with was, uh, copies of, um, citation. There was a copy of, um, a warrant for abatement. But what exactly that means, I'm not exactly sure without them. I was really hoping that they would be here to, to speak a little bit more on that.
I would, my, and, and again, it's, um, the planning director fines, and I found that the warrant for abatement qualified as a sanction. I do know that abatement, uh, activities have occurred on the property. They have, um, removed some of the material, uh, that's been there for a long time. And so some of the illegal structures have been removed at the, by the county. And to me, that, that's... Under, under that provision of the, the code.
You're just having fun with that, aren't you?
I'm not doing you a fair business.
I don't even think you're that close that far.
She's not the only one that's been doing that.
We're keeping her in line.
Well, do we know how many of these warrants for abatement are out there? Do we know how many of these warrants for abatement, they qualify as sanctions?
There were two in the file.
I, I do not know. There, my conversations with the code enforcement is, there, there have been many instances where code enforcement have gone out on complaints and to cite the, um, or at least discuss with the owner or the, the occupant of the property, the need to abate, um, all of the, the, um, unauthorized use and construction has occurred. And I think that the final, the abatement warrant that was issued was for all of the violations, that cumulative violations on the property.
Thank you.
Any other questions at Gina, right now? So is the applicant or the applicant's agent here? Appellant, I should say?
My name is Austin D. Tagler. Um, as of the violations, I know that, um, I was actually present the day they came for the warrant, the abatement. It was people within the family that were staying there and their belongings. And the county did come and took everything out. They asked me to leave and, uh, my two employees, so wouldn't be embarrassing for the family.
Could, I'm sorry, could you just speak up a little bit?
Yeah, they, they asked us to leave the property while the family was taking care of the issues with the county. There are two sheriffs, Cory was, Courtney was there. And, um, there was a, a construction team that came and just picked up all the garbage and moved the trailers. Prior to that, my knowledge was that there was, uh, a history of violation. Uh, when I spoke to Courtney, my direction was just to move a trailer, which is the one in the photo right there, up on top of the hill, um, in order for my permit not to be denied. So I eventually was able to get the family to do that. And then it turned into that, it, it was more than that, um, that that wasn't gonna be okay. Then that's when the county came and they cleared everything out. And I wanna say this was about one month ago.
Do you wanna respond or to some of the staff report about the, the situation with the ownership of the property and the estate and that there...
I've been there, I have a collective and I was there last year. And I started, the grading pictures, uh, they're just in my phone, so I didn't, I just did a, uh, Acrobat screenshot and then emailed it to myself. So it's, it's dated, I know the times are off. I don't know why it's like that, I mean, it's just saved in my phone like that, but the dates are there. Spent $2,000 last year when I first, uh, was introduced to the property to grow with my collective, um, and got it graded. So I, I was under, the whole time I was dealing with Mary Jeff, and the entire property, everybody that I dealt with, spoke to, papers that I've signed, um, was always with her. Uh, and then even when we went through this new process, when I came back and was asked to come back this year, I came back, I gave them the paperwork and I was obviously under the impression that's, that's who the owner of the land was. I honestly recently just haven't heard of that until just the last few years when I read the packet. And there was just no answer on their end. It's very small talk, and that's, that's all I have.
All right, you understand how that's difficult for us.
It really is. It, it really is, and, and I completely respect that.
Yeah. Are there any questions of Mr. Detangle? I guess we don't have any questions right now. Is there anyone else that wanted to, uh, discuss this appeal?
Hi, um, I'm not gonna give my name. Marty calls me a ray of sunshine, so we'll just stick with that. I didn't prepare for this, but I am the neighbor of this property. I call in the code violations. I can speak to the code violations, I can't speak for co-compliance on this. Uh, the abatement that was done on the property is an incomplete abatement. It has left, uh, several, uh, several problems, including a spider web of underground, um, of underground electrical services, junk, uh, a structure, an permitted structure. And what co-compliance wants, wants to do, as they conveyed to me, I'm not speaking for co-compliance on this, is they wanna correct the other problems, including, uh, including the trailer. The, they, they were actually supposed to abate the trailer and take it away, not just move it on the, during the abatement. Well, they did take the trailer away. Uh, co-compliance did agree with them that they could move the trailer. Within 24 hours, a trailer came back. So, uh, the Jeffs are, are just, uh, are, are something else. And we won't go into who the Jeffs are and their history in this county. I see Ted knows about these people. And, uh, I, you know, I hired Chris for something at some point in my life. And for, for the life of me, I don't know what it is, but I've hired every attorney in, uh, in Calaveras County and most in Amador County. When I go to a place, I tend to hire all the attorneys for some little thing, so nobody can sue me. But, uh, but yeah, it is an incomplete abatement, and they're planning on, uh, the second abatement when you, when this is denied after, uh, after the planning, or the, uh, Board of Supervisors denies it. This is, this is a slam dunk. But I wanna speak to another issue as well, and that is the, uh, GIS...
As long as it's related to this appeal.
GIS map. Okay, your GIS map is wrong on this, and it is wrong on every, uh, everyone I've seen. The, um, I've had surveys done on these properties because of, uh, because of subdivisions. And, um, I think the last one I had done was probably six years ago. I have, uh, I do have, um, uh, recorded, uh, recorded markers. I do have, uh, BLM, uh, markers as well. And on all your, especially, especially this one, you'll see that.
So you're saying the aerial photo's wrong?
Uh, aerial photos...
The lines.
The lines, the, the lines they draw on the, on the...
Ah, okay.
Uh, that your GIS system is drawing are wrong. Uh, they're wrong by as much as 50 to, to 75 feet, your setback, okay? Um, I would hate to get you mad at me, Chair. You are a lovely lady, but my, oh my. Yeah, so, so part of his grow, uh, is within the 75-foot setback, okay? Uh, it should be denied on that alone, there's no way to, uh, correct it at this point. Um, as I said, the code violations are still, are still there. What else do we have on this one? Last night, they arrested a felon on the property. Several, uh, several problems there. I, I don't think I can speak to the, um, you know, that would be the sheriff department and, and if they had weighed in on this. But I don't think they weighed on this, in on this one, so let's, uh, let's end it with that. I wanna say it's a real pleasure to be here. You are far more interesting than the Board of Supervisors.
We've heard that before.
The arguments are far more concise, far more interesting, uh...
Well, thank, thank you very much.
I, I did, I haven't, actually enjoyed today. I, I, you don't, don't expect me, I have one more, uh, one more denial that needs to be processed. But don't expect me to come back here, uh, very often. It's along, as, uh...
Thank you.
As Jim Macedo said, it's a, um, it's a long winding road from the middle of nowhere.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So before we close the public hearing, Mr. Detangle, did you have anything else you wanted to? Okay, thanks. All right, uh, we'll close the public hearing and Plan and Commission.
If I may, I'd like to address the property line issue and the, the, you know, the, the layer that we use is, for property lines is based on our assessor's maps. The assessor's maps are not a survey. We recognize in some cases that these lines are not correct. Some of them are quite obvious, some are not so obvious. You know, when a line follows a road and the road's a property line, it seems to be pretty accurate. But in some cases, the assessor's information that they have mapped for assessment purposes, not for survey purposes, may not actually represent the true boundaries. So we, we use this as a rule of thumb, but we do not rely on this solely. And, um, I think this was the issue that Mr. Williams raised in the last, um, appeal, as well as a prior, prior appeal that we've had. And since that time, we've taken a closer look at some of these things and realized that indeed they are off in some cases. Um, and that, if that's the case, then we'll be working with the property owner to provide us the information to clearly demonstrate, um, that, um, you know, that where the property line is. In this case, this was not the issue. It looks like it may be off, offset a little bit here. But that's not the issue with this, um, with this case. It was primarily on the, um, the lack of, of proper ownership and the, the, um, authority to grow on the site, as well as the history of, of code violations, that this was denied.
Well, I, I can't get over the...
The lack of ownership, seems like that ended the whole thing.
Yeah, that's where I was gonna go with it also. I mean, we could deliberate about everything down to the code violations, but number one, right off the top, there's no, no proof when it comes to a lease for the property.
Did you see that, Helen? Cabinet first and then...
No, I, I agree with you. I'm not convinced, I'm not convinced that the sanctions issue, is that clear to me? That this history actually does fall
Yes.
within the category of a history of sanctions, fines, or penalties?
Yeah, the two abatements.
Sort of prefer not to rely on that. But I think the theory to prove... I sort of prefer not to rely on that, but I think the theory to prove ownership or lawful possession is dispositive, and I think the lack of cultivation is also a ground for denial.
And I would concur. I mean, it's unfortunate, we had another similar situation where someone misrepresented their ownership of a parcel and leased the parcel illegally to someone who was seeking a registration for cultivation and had to be denied for that very same reason. And I mean, that, that is very clear, that that is a clear requirement of the, of the ordinance. So I would concur with my commissioners that upholding the planning director's reclamation, recommendation of denial for the appeal.
It probably would be appropriate then to modify the, the resolution if you felt that the, that that was the basis of your, your denial of the appeal and upholding to maybe remove item number three.
Was that having to do with the code compliance?
That was a code compliance issue, if you felt uncomfortable relying on that as the basis of denial.
I don't know that, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with it being a contributing factor, but not, you know, the basis. The basis for me is, is certainly the...
It is finding more denial, so...
So there's no, there's no, this is the one, this is the primary, this is the...
You're really going to make the denial, the finding...
Okay. Well, I'm comfortable with the code compliance. I mean, many years ago, the planning commission, Ted will remember, we were the code compliance hearing board, so was very familiar pretty much with that process.
Guess what? You are again, or still.
Oh, yeah, we still are, but we never meet anymore, huh?
That soon will end.
Yeah. So I'm comfortable with it, but it's, it's up to the rest of the commissioners.
I'm not.
Okay.
You're not comfortable with it?
It being a sanction, under the ordinance, you're saying?
I'm not seeing a history of sanctions, fines, or penalties. The only ones that qualify would be a warrant for abatement, of which there is what, one or two? I don't think that's enough. Certainly no fines have been levied, no penalties have been levied.
Well, we don't know that.
Abatement is...
We don't know that.
That's the truth of it is.
That's the point. If we don't know it, we can't rely on it.
Yeah. Well, I would say even like, by the time you get to a warrant for abatement, that's a pretty big, pretty long history there. So, again, I'm comfortable, but it's up to you, it's up to the rest of the majority of the commission.
Well, since code compliance isn't here, I think we have enough on the basis of it being not a valid lease. It wasn't an actual owner that documented and signed the lease, so I'd like to make the, a change to the resolution to remove the code compliance and base the decision on denial for just having an invalid lease. That's my opinion.
What about lack of showing of cultivation?
I think that, I would concur on that. The first, the first two, possession of property, inadequate evidence of cultivation, and let's strike the history of code violations for now. I could go with that.
So is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to deny the appeal based upon lack of law, showing of lawful possession and evidence of cultivation, meeting the requirements of the ordinance, which items one and two in the draft resolution.
I'll second that.
Yes, been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Well, we've heard back from on high.
So we have sitting in the back what our new, our newest deputy county counsel, Ethan Turner, he's going to be helping with a lot of the cannabis enforcement. His salary is paid by the cannabis enforcement. He did go back and speak with the assistant county counsel, David Sirius. The county counsel, Megan Stedfeld, was not present. Assistant county counsel said that emphatically that he did not believe the planning commission has the authority to decline to decide. And so that's, you know, that's, that's basically the order, you know, from on high.
So I, I don't know, there's, potentially there's some options here, I guess, is that if there is a majority that feels that there is enough information, testimony, to deny the appeal, at which case the appellant could appeal to the board of supervisors, we could continue it, even though I'm not sure, I don't think that's...
I wouldn't want to delay them for a continuance at this point.
That's not going to serve the appellant, I don't believe.
I think based on the information that we have and interpreting 7.95, I'm going to uphold the planning department's decision and that I think that the proper place for this is for him to appeal to the supervisors if they want to rule on a different intent.
Is that a motion?
That is.
Second.
Yes, been moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did we get everyone?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. So we are moving on to 2016-1045, Appeal to Planning Director's Denial of Commercial Cannabis Cultivation Registration Application, 2016-863 for APN 048-037-038. That's Scott?
It's me.
Uh-huh.
Our last planner today. I'm kind of older.
No, we, we have one after you. We have this planner at the end.
Okay, this is 2016-1045, appealed by Gary Freitas for the app of registration in 2016-863. The application was denied due to insufficient evidence of cultivation prior to May 10, 2016. And also, I know it's been a day and a half ago, I got that aside check, he also did not submit required documents that were needed to be submitted by September 7th of this year. That was not the original reason denied, but that is such kind of happened since...
And what are those required documents?
The information from the water board report that he had applied for, I don't know, a, a...
Marty, what did he do?
Whoa!
Scott, Scott.
Okay.
I have to speak to several...
You have to talk loud, but they can't hear you out there.
Don't touch that, don't touch that thing on the floor. The floor, don't, your foot hits it and you're in trouble. There you go.
Okay. So water board control documents are not submitted, business license application is not submitted, state seller's permit is not submitted, and neither was proof that they, I'll get to it later, but proof that it's a business entity in the state of California.
Okay, thank you.
None of those documents that were required.
Okay.
So first off, insufficient evidence of occupation. We require that they provide that they have taken multiple steps by May 10. The photos provided do not show that. It shows a bunch of small things and cuffs, but nothing showing that it's on the subject parcel, that it could be taken anywhere. The aerial photos that we have, this here is the site man that was submitted, it shows the water cultivation site was, and our photos from June 3rd show absolutely nothing in that area whatsoever. In addition to that, there's a letter submitted by Appleton's daughter, who was living on the property. It was signed by her husband and also her sister and her sister's husband. All four signed the letter. It states that there was no site preparation whatsoever on the property until July 8th of this year, and there's no cannabis at all on the property until July 25th of this year, at which time her husband was forced to leave the property because he is a felon who would be in legal pressure.
So who are these people again?
It is his daughter and her husband, two daughters and both their husbands. Crystal Rolles and Jacinta Rolles are the ones that were living on the property.
Okay, thank you.
I talked to her on the phone this morning, she wasn't able to make it because she passed the work. And that, that letter was included in the package. Also, the required documents that the, the person who was required to be submitted by September 3rd are not submitted. Those are, like I said before, evidence of compliance of water board, business license applications, state seller's permit, and proof of background registration of this entity in the state of California. There are none of that that has been submitted to the planning department. In light of failure to comply with the requirements of showing that they, they aren't registered for cultivation and giving us the required documents, I recommend that we pass a motion to sign this, 2016-28, denying...
Any questions of Scott?
No.
No. Okay. Is Mr. Freitas or Mr. Freitas' agent here?
My name's Gary Freitas, and I applied for the license, and he said, when I did the application, that all I needed is my background check and site inspection. And he approved me on that. But now you're trying to say that those plants could have been anywhere, but you didn't say that when I showed you the pictures. And...
Yeah.
So you got all this stuff against me, so I don't see how I'm going to get approved. And that's why I didn't go and pay the water rights and all that stuff and spend more money, so...
So could you just respond to the, the aerial imagery not showing any plants at all?
Well, the plants were babies, so we had to put them under the house for at least two, two months under there to grow. And, and then, so that's why we didn't have to, what do you call, grade the land or get it all ready and all that stuff, until they were ready to go outside. That's, I have an application of mixed light. So, and the other problem was, my daughter, her husband's an ex-fel, felon, he was in prison for seven years, and they kept on saying, well, he'll be arrested because he's a felon if you put marijuana here. So I was, what do you call, my attempt was to bring them at my house. But then when that happened, I didn't want them to get arrested. You know what I'm saying? So I was hoping they were going to move, because they said they were going to move, and they, they didn't. So then I brought the plants to my house, July, whatever it was, 20 something. But my attempt was to do this, because I bought them in April, and so that's what happened. And that's why my daughter wrote this, the statement she did. And, but in the beginning, I didn't, I wasn't planning on doing it, but then I thought about it and I said, well, this is a chance where I can make some money. And, and that's why I didn't go spend that extra money for the water board and all that stuff, because if, if you're going to die, why should I spend $1,000? I'm already wrapped up here, $13,500 in it.
All right. Are there any questions of Mr. Freitas?
Yes, this, this picture here that was submitted?
Yeah.
Where was that taken?
That was taken at my son's house. I'm not going to lie to you, so let me tell you the truth.
And is that on the site that you're requesting an application for?
No.
Registration for?
No. Because, like I'm saying, I bought it, those plants, but then what happened with my daughter and the husband, because they, they came out of my house and started yelling and screaming at me and saying he'll go to jail and all this stuff, so I just said, okay, I won't do it. So that's what happened there. And that was on my, the plants were on my property at that time.
Any other questions of Mr. Freitas?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas. We may have more questions later. Is there anyone else with us this afternoon that would like to address the commission on this appeal? No? Okay. Is it, was there anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Freitas? If you do, you need to come back up to the podium. Before we close the public hearing.
My, my intent all along was to grow them at my house, because I have six and a half acres, and I had it in, I did everything that the county said, you know, put the, the netting up and the fencing and, and get the locks and get the locks on the chemical stuff and... But I'm just saying, I, I was in between about doing it or not doing it, and my attempt was to do it. And then, then I decided, well, maybe I can bring it somewhere else and grow it and then bring it back if they would move, because they said they were going to move and then they didn't. I guess that's all I could say.
Discussion?
Well, there's definitely no grading done prior to May 10th, that I can see. I mean, there's, I definitely sense some conflict there and where he was moving around, I have questions about.
He wasn't cultivating on the property by May 10th, which basically, according to the registration guidelines, does support the planning department's decision.
I agree.
Well, and I, I, you know, there wasn't evidence of cultivation, and I think your intention and your waffling, you know, like thinking you're going to grow and then you're not going to grow and really, I mean, for what, your personal reasons, I think it shows. And, you know, by your not pursuing the required documents that, for the water board, the business license, you know, because you're back and forth and... So I, I mean, I need, I have to support the planning director's recommendation of denial of your appeal.
I just want to say I appreciate your honesty.
Yes, I do too.
Thank you.
I didn't want him to go to jail.
Yeah, but you didn't have to admit you weren't growing on the property, you were growing elsewhere, and we appreciate your honesty. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, I, I just don't think it meets the requirements of the ordinance.
No.
I mean, it's clear to me that there was, there is evidence of growing prior to the date. It just wasn't evidence showing...
Growing on the property.
Cultivation site on the property. And that's where we get tripped up by the language of the ordinance.
I think it's one of those situations where either, you know, a lot of people seem to have either misunderstood the ordinance, or either, you know, purposely chose to ignore the provision. I think this sounds like somewhat of maybe a misunderstanding, that the ordinance didn't allow someone who wasn't previously cultivating to start cultivating.
Right.
Even if they could qualify. They had to have previously cultivated or prepared the site for cultivation. And this just didn't happen here. And so I think a lot of people seem to think that, oh, I was growing 5,000 square feet so now I can expand it up to 20,000 square feet. No, that's not the case. It's what you were growing previously, and if you weren't growing anything, you had to wait till a permanent ordinance is in place, if that occurs, to be able to, to start a new cultivation area.
Right.
And that's where I think there might be some confusion, but that's very clear the intent of the board on that one.
That's a good reminder, yeah.
Can we take a break before we start the...
We got, do we have a motion yet?
We, not yet. I was hoping to get one.
I... Regrettably so, we'd like to make a motion to uphold the planning department's recommendation for denial of commercial code.
Second. It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So we will take a short five-minute break until question meeting. Our next item is 2014-055 tentative parcel map for Suzanne Peak Segal. That's yours, Scott?
That's me. All right, like you said, this is for a tentative parcel map, 2014-055, Suzanne Peak Segal. This is a vision of, you can talk loud, right? This is a vision of 82 acres into two residential lots. General plan designation is for future single-family residential, five-acre minimum. The zoning is general agriculture. There is domestic well on, well, I shouldn't say, there are currently two houses on the property. One is a domestic well, one is on CCW water, and both have on-site septic. The location is Pointe Peak Road about Springs, it's the stop of Highway 12. There are two family homes on the property. There are, there is no buildable area designated on the parcel map that is within the flood zone, flood zone. There's rolling grasslands, scattered little oaks on the property, low archaeological sensitivity. However, it is California tiger salamander habitat on the property. So there are, there were three sites that were found that contain California tiger salamander habitat. They're there on this map. As a result, according to California Fish and Wildlife, they designated building envelopes on each parcel to mitigate the possibility of building an accessory dwelling on each parcel in the future. There aren't plans to build accessory dwellings at this time, so since that is the rightful property owner to do so, they established building envelopes for those to make sure there wouldn't be no building in tiger salamander habitat. The parcel map itself is consistent with the general plan, Annapolis 17. Parcel one is 20 acres, parcel two is 62 acres. There's a minimum of 20 acres required for general agricultural zoning. They both meet the required widths and depths, and block cover setbacks and building height will be verified whenever this construction is completed. This is the parcel map itself. The darker gray areas on the map are the future building sites if property owners decide to build a secondary dwelling. The secret document is mitigated native declaration. It was circulated between June 22nd and May 22nd of this year. We had three comment letters, one by the Cal State Engineering District, one by the National Fire Control Board, and one from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. No comments that we received, nor any revisions to the document or any changes to the significance of the law. As a result, I recommend that you pass a motion to sign resolution 2016-24, adopting the initial study and mitigating the declaration and approve tentative parcel map 2014-055.
Any questions to Scott?
Yes. When you talked about the building envelopes, are you talking about the identification of the two gray areas you were talking about?
Yes, so I'm here. There you've got those two darker gray areas on each parcel, one all the way to the west and one all the way to east. You see those?
Cut you a pointer.
Oh, cut a pointer.
Green button.
There, and right now there is nothing on those sites, but that's designated as areas where they could build accessory dwellings in the future if they so chose, and those areas would not be affecting any tiger salamander habitat.
Well, if the salamander habitat area was such a small area, why is the building envelope so small? I'm just curious.
They did that, they...
Who did that?
That would be the engineer.
Well, we...
The house engineer did that. I assume it's because it only had four hundred square feet for a dwelling unit anyway, so why make them... But he should probably speak on that, not me.
Okay.
That was proposed to us as mitigation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Thank you. Here, that was proposed...
Sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Scott.
Yeah, that was what was proposed...
But it's good to watch you think.
By the environmental engineer.
Twist and turn.
Any other questions to Scott?
No, thank you.
Mr. Peters, are you the applicant's agent?
I am, yes, thank you. Robin Peters with Cal State Engineering. I represent the applicants today. As Scott indicated, a fairly simple estate planning exercise. We do have two homes, pardon me, on the parcels. It's an 82-acre parcel. And this exercise is to separate the two homes, one on each parcel, for estate planning and financing purposes. No future construction is anticipated, but since each legal parcel can also contain an accessory dwelling, the county asked us to look at the, from an environmental review perspective, look at this project in terms of the potential down the road of not just two dwelling units, but two plus two accessory dwelling units. That, of course, triggered the notion of constructing two more dwellings, and because we're in tiger habitat, tiger salamander habitat area, we retained a biologist to look at the property and figure out what the tiger salamander situation really is. Those three spots that Scott showed earlier are actually tiger salamander occurrences, either the animal itself or indications that the animal is or was there, it's in some form. Salamanders come in several forms, larvae and, I'm already out of my element, but the point, though, is that the bulk of the property is potentially suitable habitat for the tiger salamander. A salamander breeds in ponds, and at least one of those circled areas is a pond. So the salamander breeds in the ponds and then scurries about finding an estivation site, usually a gopher burrow or some other rodent-type burrow. And then it spends some time there until it's time to return and breed again later. So what we asked the biologist to do was evaluate the site for potential tiger salamander habitat, and more to the point, look for portions of the site that are unsuitable habitat for the tiger salamander, for a variety of reasons I probably could not adequately explain. And so what he did is with his GPS unit during his survey, he identified for us, using GPS coordinates, a couple of areas, one on each of the proposed parcels, that is completely unsuitable for the tiger salamander. So those areas are designated as building envelopes for future development, and that's why they're located where they are. Those happen to be the unsuitable tiger salamander habitat areas. Aside from that, straightforward, we've reviewed the proposed conditions, take no exception to them, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Peters?
No.
No? I don't think so. We might have some later.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else here to address the planning commission on this application?
My name's Chris Irvine. I'm past president of Quarma. It's Quail Oaks Road Maintenance Association. I've been on the board for most 30 years. This property backs up to our subdivision roads. They are not a member of Quarma. It has the potential of 160 units in there somewhere down the road, which would very much impact our roads. They're privately maintained roads. We're currently trying to maintain the roads for traffic coming in and out of Rancho subdivision going to Highway 26 and Highway 12, and there's actually more traffic from outside our subdivision doing this than there is from within it. I wish that you would take into consideration that if there is any future development here, that there would be some kind of assessment towards maintaining the roads that we are having to do privately.
Thanks, Mr. Irvine. We're just looking at a parcel split right now. That's the only thing before us.
Okay.
Yeah, not, not anything larger than that. The other thing, and by the looks of the map and the two building sites, chances are there's not going to be that level of development anyway because of the habitat restrictions.
Yeah, one of them's right up against Quail Oaks Road.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
There's no room on the sign-in sheet.
Ooh! It's got to be a record.
It's got to be a record.
The other odd thing is you're not the first one that signed it.
That is unusual, yes. Good afternoon, Colleen Platt with myaleysprings.com. I'm glad the gentleman brought up the point that one of the future accessory dwelling sites is actually on Butler Lane there, and that is a Quail Oaks subdivision road. And I realize this is just a parcel split, but I thought maybe this was the time to just at least bring that up. That road, Butler Lane, it looks like it continues to the roads that are in the front, but there's actually a gate, a locked gate there, so the road ends. So it's a dead-end emergency road, so if there was to be a parcel developed there, not a parcel, excuse me, an accessory dwelling developed there, it would be at the end of a very long emergency access road, and that's where the Patterson fire hit. So we just have some, a little bit of concerns about adding more dwellings in an area that doesn't have good access, and I'm not sure if that would be addressed when the accessory dwelling application would come forward.
Yes.
Okay. That's the question I had, because I mentioned that to Scott last spring, and I thought that's probably not the time to bring it up. But they do have a good point, that that would potentially add more traffic to their subdivision also. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Peters, anything to add? Before we close the public hearing?
Perhaps I neglected to mention that one of the dwellings, dwelling on parcel one, the 20-acre parcel, is located in the far southwesterly corner of the parcel, lower left, far lower left, yes, right there. It takes access from Dennis Court. And then the other dwelling is sort of in the center of the larger piece, yep, right there, and it takes access off of Henny. Scott, can you show where the access point is? Right there. So again, we don't propose any, any future construction, certainly no, nothing planned at this point. So our access points are not associated with the Quail Oaks roads there and in Rancho Calvers roads. Easements are in place, and there are no issues.
All right. Thank you very much. So I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion and action by the commission.
I don't see a problem with this.
Neither do I.
And I don't either. So is there, going right to it, is there a motion? Or let's hear the recommendation, Scott, and we'll go that way.
Okay. The planning department recommends that you pass a motion to sign resolution 2016-24, adopting the initial study and mitigating the declaration to approve tentative parcel map 2014-055.
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. On to 2015-078 tentative parcel map for Catherine Powell. And that's you again, Scott?
That's me again. As you said, tentative parcel map 2015-078 for Catherine Powell. This is a vision of 15 3/4 acres into two residential lots. It is in the McCollum Hill community plan, designated as rural residential in that plan. It's zoned rural residential. It's on the domestic well and on-site septic. Here is its location. It is just south of the McCollum River, right where Highway 49 crosses the river. It has access off of Big Bar Road. The environmental setting in the site includes one single-family home. No buildable area is located in the flood plain. It isn't within the repairing corridor of the river. There is no designated critical habitat on the property. However, it is higher archaeological sensitivity on the northern developed portion of the property. We'll get into that in a second. The parcel map is consistent with the overall plan, Annapolis 17, parcel one A, which is the northern parcel, it's 10.66 acres. Parcel one B, the undeveloped southern parcel, it's just over five acres. It meets all the development standards for Baroas and other zoning. Here is the parcel map itself. So the archaeological sensitivity cuts off right up here, and it's associated with the fact that that being a large part. So the southern new parcel to be developed has low archaeological sensitivity. This issue was brought up previously for the conditional use permit or to turn the home back in the late '90s into a bed and breakfast, and the tribe had no problem with it. And archaeological things, being of their nature, they'll really change within 20 years as far as the tribe is concerned, tribe remains are concerned. That being said, of course, Calvers is a lot, if they do uncover any sort of archaeological studies, they have to stop whatever they're doing in the future and evaluate from there.
So you're saying the highest sensitivity is on the parcel, the part that's already developed?
It's already developed.
Okay.
So any future development will be on the area below sensitive.
Okay.
We did a secret document native declaration. It circulated between July and August of this year. We received one comment letter from East Bay Municipal Utility District regarding urban patrol measures. We did not award any revisions to the document, already changed and spent the votes. And as a result, I recommend that you pass a motion to sign resolution 2016-29, adopting the initial study and mitigating the declaration, and approve tentative parcel map 2015-78. That being said, I just remembered I was wanting to say this for the day of my review. Draft resolution does a couple typos that I'd like to fix, or to publish about here in a second. Public Works, for the condition 3.1, that was a whole over from a previous, from actually the Q Segal document that I did, that needs to be updated into hiring. And also in 2C, Max and Gray Road, that can move at 16% slope, Public Works granted a change for their slope recommendations based on engineers, populations, and a lot of the nasty...
Any questions to Scott? Is Catherine Powell or Catherine's, oh, Mr. Peters again.
Good work.
Robin Peters, Cal State Engineering. I'm representing Mrs. Powell in her application this afternoon. Again, relatively simple two-way split. We've worked extensively with Public Works and the planning department on the conditions, and I think Scott pointed out a couple of minor changes that have been negotiated with Public Works. I'd also like to point out that condition 5-1... I'd also like to point out that condition 5-1 is a little of an anomaly in that it was a request by East Bay Mud for unusual erosion control measures. Now, when a property is developed, essentially this property, this proposed new parcel, development really only requires development of a short access road and then a building pad eventually when it's built on. In the process of grading, there's a grading plan that we prepare for the driveway access and the graded pad for the home. And erosion control measures are standard procedure. We do them on every grading project, and they're dialed into every grading plan that we do. East Bay Mud has, for reasons I don't understand, asked that we incorporate some really unusual erosion control measures that must be based on Bay Area practices that really don't apply here. In fact, some of the materials that they've asked that we use for erosion control, you can't get up here. So the request in their letter has been turned into a condition that really isn't justifiable, and it requests that we use materials that are not readily available in this area. So I would ask that unless there's a reason to include condition 5-1 that I'm not aware of, that that be struck as well, so that we can rely on materials that we know and understand and that are readily available around here. Other than that, Scott did a great job presenting the application, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Peters?
So I'm looking at this. I'm looking at the wrong one, I think. No, I'm not. What can't you get here that's on there?
Yeah, let me, that property is right at the river's edge, right?
What it's basically saying is waddles, right?
Well, no, waddles are standard procedure, and silt fencing is standard procedure, but the waddles that they're asking us to use, I've never seen them.
They're perfectly put together.
And the silt fencing that they've asked us to use, you can't get around here. So it's Bay Area stuff that they must be used to and that they feel is important to use for reasons that maybe don't apply here, but we don't use those materials here. We use standard silt fencing and standard waddles and erosion control measures that do the trick and are very effective here.
I'm guessing the reason why is because it's the watershed, and the McCallum River provides water for like 1.2 million people.
I understand that.
So they're doing everything they possibly can not to get intrusion of not just soil and stuff from building, but also the actual materials that you're using to prevent soil erosion into the water.
I'm sure that's the intent.
That would, that's be my guess.
I would represent that our normal erosion control best management practices and materials are just as effective, and they simply haven't justified the use of anything else.
Right.
So I would ask that consideration be made to eliminate that condition and allow us to use what local contractors know and understand and implement properly to accomplish the same goal.
Right, I understand that. But again, this isn't sort of your normal circumstance. It's a very critical watershed. That would be my response.
Understood. Thank you.
Are there any questions to Mr. Peters?
Yeah, I don't think I got the answer I was looking for.
Well, what was your question?
Were you interrupting me?
I know, I was gonna say, I'm sorry.
And that was rude.
No, I know, I interrupted you.
Okay.
I was, I thought I was giving you time to search for your, what you were looking for.
If, okay. So you're saying it's an area that's sensitive to, what's the difference if they use this or something else?
Well, I think what, you know, I certainly have no expert, but I'm thinking that they're asking for materials that, let's say, worst case, end up in the water, near the water, that they are, they're not plastic, they're not, they're things that are going to biodegrade without harming flora and fauna or influencing the quality of the water.
Okay, and so what is it that you're wanting to use that we would typically use that's different from this? I guess what I want to do is understand what you, why you want this removed and what you're going to substitute it with and give us a justifiable reason.
Great question. So erosion control materials are, the use of erosion control materials and best management practices in general are driven by the state stormwater permitting, this very complex framework of state stormwater permitting. And that flows down to the county, and the county implements state permitting at the county level because it's what we call an MS4. The county operates under its own stormwater permit, and it has its own stormwater regulations in place, and they're very detailed and strict, and frankly, quite well done compared to surrounding counties. So within the greater context of state and then later Calaveras-specific stormwater permitting, best management practice such as waddles, silt fencing, and things like that are considered temporary erosion control measures. They're put into place prior to construction, prior to grading, and then once the site is stable, grading complete, erosion control materials, sometimes straw, sometimes hydromulch, sometimes hydroseeding, or sometimes a combination of those. Those things are put into place, and then these temporary erosion control measures are removed. And it isn't because they're unsightly or because we're going to use them on another job. It's stipulated by state law pursuant to this permitting program that temporary erosion control measures, like the waddles and the silt fencing, be removed prior to considering the site stable and complete. So, for example, East Bay Mud has asked us to use biodegradable, nonplastic materials as if the intent is to leave them in place until they degrade. Well, that's not what we do. We remove these things and throw them away prior to considering the site complete because that's driven by state law. So I'm not sure what the intent is here.
Okay, so going back to what Vaughn was saying, and is this an area that is going to always have to be managed, or are you just thinking of management during construction, but yet East Bay is thinking permanent solutions?
No, I think they're thinking that even though you remove them, but stuff happens, right? Things get, you know, things get left on job sites, things get, you know, heavy rains, whatever, stuff happens in that if there's an intrusion, that it's not, it's an intrusion that's not going to affect quality of life for the animals that live in the river, but also quality of life for the people that depend on that for their water, source of water.
Isn't there just a common phrase you can put in there that has to do with best practices?
Yes, and I believe Public Works and one of the other conditions already stipulates that best management practices be used. In fact, it's condition 3-6. And those are, of course, the measures that we always use on projects in Calaveras and all the Foothill counties, really. I don't want to make an issue of this.
And let me ask you the-
For no good reason?
Right. No, 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 I understand that. How big of a deal is this? I mean, is this like, I mean, we're talking about-
It's a material issue.
A house. Yes, I understand that, but it's, in the scheme of things, if we're talking about a subdivision, which would be even more reason to have it, I understand, but I'm just wondering.
Is it a hill to die on? No. It's just one of those quirky, unsupportable, really unjustified requests that East Bay Mud commonly makes, I'll be honest, that I was hoping to eliminate. Is it worth a great deal of discussion? No. It'll probably triple or quadruple the cost of erosion control. Is that the end of the day? I might want to ask my client that.
Yeah.
But it's a cost issue, and we're just trying to save-
Right.
-the applicant a little money.
I understand that.
I would also like to interject, having built up in the Tahoe Basin for approximately six years, dealing with the TRPA and them at the time being one of the forefront on this type of issue, keeping the lake blue and clean, that they never instituted this type of thing. They did, what they instituted was exactly what you talked about, was a mesh with waddles. And then part of the mitigation that they propose in it is that you lay down straw and with the straw native seed at that time, at which point, once that grows, that's past your erosion point, and then you remove all said things. So I would sort of concur with his wishes in my mind, because there are much more stringent places like the TRPA that do follow the course that he's asking for.
And I would like to interject real quick, that this was in response to the secret document. This was not part of the proposed secret document. You can uphold the secret document with striking this condition if you feel the desire to. It does not change that.
Okay. Other questions to Mr. Peters, and we'll see if anyone else, and we might have some more later. Thank you. Was there anyone else with us that would like to address the planning commission on this parcel map request?
Colleen Platt again. Could I just ask a few questions, maybe of Scott or whatever? What the, there is additional conditions about a 16% slope negotiated with Public Works or whatever? I just noticed this is a very steep parcel. We've all, we've all driven by there. There's slope next to the highways about like that.
Right.
And just looking at what they've already done with the access and a concrete wall, I mean, the access road on the parcel map would be right above that drive, above the highway there. So it's a very, very steep site to get up to a building envelope, so.
Because we have, what is the limitation now in general, unless you get, isn't it?
12%.
12, so they're going under the 4.
Oh, so there was a-
Well, that's just in general, that you can't go above 12.
Yeah, the standard is 12.
Yeah.
And then the engineer submitted saying we can safely do 16%, that would be much easier and much more able to do it, and it would be all state requirements, and the public works department agreed that.
So they allowed a steeper access driveway than normal because of the site is a very steep site?
Which is not uncommon in Calaveras County, because we can't foresee and have everything be at 12% because, as you know, driving around here, there are many steep hills that, you know, at certain points do go above that, but at the same time, you have to worry about ice issues and stuff farther up the hill.
Right, but this is, yeah, this is low, so I was just wondering if that might have been part of East Bay Mud's concern?
I don't think so.
No, not the steepness, it's-
That's unrelated.
The steepness wouldn't be related to the erosion control?
Not as far as the, they had no comments about the steepness of the road. Is that correct? Yeah, that was totally unrelated.
Okay. It's just related to that is on their watershed for the party reservoir?
It's related more, I believe, to the new parcel being created, should there be a structure built there in the future.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, the new parts-
The new, oh, as far as the, in the road to the new parcel.
The new parcel is very steep, it's 16%, and this is on the watershed for East Bay Mud's party reservoir, so that's why they're concerned. So it just makes sense then to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Marty Crane. I think it's good to know, we've talked today about the intent and why we decided this or made this rule or changed this ruling or put this in place, or, and I seem to recall lots of discussion around the 12% having to do with emergency access for our fire trucks. It was all about driveways, and I'm not sure if this driveway is the 16% or what you're talking about on this, but I seem to-
We'll ask Mr. Peters to address that. He's standing right behind you.
I was going to say that what you're saying is true. There was a lot of discussion around it, and it was the fact that the trucks need to be able to get up and turn around.
Right.
And Mr. Peters did state that they would qualify with all state guidelines on that.
County, okay, but the county limited things to 12% grade, as I recall. I still, I was wondering.
We'll ask him. Thank you.
Yes.
The standard is 12, but the code provides an ability for an applicant to ask for a modification, and that gets reviewed by the Public Works Department, and they have done so and recommended approval of the request for modification.
And those discussions were powered in large part, I believe, by our fire departments.
Emergency access is indeed one of the issues that, reasons why we have these kind of road standards. So the access driveway to the newly created parcel will cross the existing parcel via an easement. So in Calaveras County, when more than one parcel is served by an access drive, it becomes a road. And once it's called a road, even though it only is intended to serve the one parcel, in theory, somebody could, as they're winding up to the new parcel, they could turn off theoretically and access the existing home on the other parcel, even though it has its own driveway. But in Calaveras County, the interpretation over the years has been, because that is theoretically possible, somebody traversing that easement could go both ways, it's a road. In Calaveras County, a road is limited to 12% grade. So, and we know this, we've run into this many times. We did a grading exercise to make sure that the road worked and to make sure that we have our easement shown in the correct location. 12% could work, but it produced a great deal of grading because starting here and we need to get to here, at 12%, we need a lot more length, and your road tends to wind, and your grading tends to expand a great deal. Eventually, you get to where you need to go, but it takes a great deal more grading at 12% than it does at 16%. So we tried other options and steepened the driveway a little until we got to that 16% point, and it worked beautifully along the alignment of the existing driveway that accesses this parcel. And it doesn't really show very well on this slide, but there's an existing driveway that takes you right onto this parcel. And at 16%, really what we're doing is sprucing up the existing access drive rather than grading a brand-new road that is much longer and requires much more grading to accomplish. So I proposed a 16% to Public Works, knowing that the state, when they developed the fire and life safety standards pursuant to PRC 4290, those standards were adopted eventually by most of the counties in California, certainly Calaveras. 16% is the standard for fire and life safety access, and there are other standards for surface and drainage and clearance and that sort of thing. But 16% is the state standard for fire and life safety access, and that's why we made sure that this proposal fell within that umbrella. So that's the explanation. We reduced grading by, oh, gosh, 75% perhaps, and still meet the state standards and the county standards for life safety access. So that's the rationale. Are there any other questions regarding the road? Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Discussion, planning commission?
Well, I do see the issue with 5-1 in the East Bay Mud request. Just reading it has looked as if it's an effort to be wildlife-friendly, because it says the BMP shall be wildlife-friendly, with wildlife safe design, reducing the potential for wildlife entanglement. None of that seems to me to tie to water quality at all. It also requires that these materials be biodegradable, and I guess if they biodegrade it too quickly, you wouldn't be able to pull them out, because they'd be rotting on the spot, unlike the materials that are usually used and then pulled out. Maybe when they biodegrade, they might not make the water taste very good either. And it seems to me that these matters are already covered by other conditions here, such as 3-6 and 3-7, which incorporates the county's requirements that have apparently been sufficient for us, so I'm inclined to strike V-1.
I would concur with what Kelly just said.
I would concur, but I'd like to see that the 3.6 implement best management practices go in its place, so that we are addressing it for the utility district.
Well, it's a condition regardless. You don't need to repeat it.
So, it's gonna be, okay.
It's already a condition, it's a requirement. The titles, the, just sort of identify where those conditions came from.
I'm good.
Ted?
I'm ready for the recommendation.
So, I guess we're ready for the recommendation.
All right. Recommend that you pass motion to sign resolution 2619, adopt the initial study and the declaration to approve TPN 201578.
Well, I would make that motion with the amendment that section V-1 be stricken and including the corrections that you previously announced.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we're on the home stretch. Planning Commission review and recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on the general plan. Our topic of discussion...
I'm sorry.
You just had it.
Are the final edits, yes?
Yeah, question for the commission. Do you need to look at anything on the screen as far as maps? Do I need to set that up or?
We may.
We may?
Well, maybe we'll see if we do.
I'm not saying we will.
Well, then, if we do, we'll take a five minute.
Okay, okay.
Okay. So, any introductions, Peter?
Um, no, like you say, this is the, we're in the home stretch. Really at the very end, sprint to the finish line now. I have made some edits to the land use element based on what I understood to be the discussion that we had, clarifying issues regarding when public water is required, that it doesn't have to have water today to be identified as, you know, future higher density or community center, it's just that as development occurs, water would need to be drawn in to support that development. Created the new land use designation of future specific plan. And then at the end of that table are the notes as far as the two sites identifying the specific parcels that we identified and the maximum potential density based on the requests by the property owners. I also added a column on Table Land Use 2 that added that future specific plan and the conforming zoning that would fit within there. There is a summary of all of the changes. I hope I got that right. And the map that's attached that is also posted on our website, you need to see it in more detail, reflects the changes that we've made over the past five meetings. I am hopeful that I captured all of the changes. Oh, there's also the change about the reference to the policy in the public facilities and service element. That policy was removed and I didn't see any need to revise that language because there was no other similar policy, so I just struck that reference from the description in the land use designation.
Any questions of Peter?
Just to be clear, this is not the final action. This is a recommendation to the board to accept this draft as the project description for the purposes of preparing the EIR. There still will need to be some adjustments made, particularly since we've made changes to the land use map. We'll be running the circulation model, which may result in modifications to the circulation element, but that will be done as part of the EIR. And the final draft after the EIR is completed would reflect any changes that might be made. So, for example, if we increase density in one area, then increase the amount of traffic, that road might have dropped from LOSC to D and then therefore may require improvements as a part of our, the circulation element map that would identify those roads that would be reduced in level. But that would be carried forward into the final draft after we complete the EIR. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, before we open it up for the public hearing, I do know we had some written comments which we can address. Does the commission have any edits, things that Peter may have not captured? Just to kind of get that out of the way first.
One point, I had a note and I can't find it. On Whittle, it only showed one change and there were actually three.
Hutchison was the other name. So, on 98, you see Hutchison et al. That was also the Whittle property.
That's what it was. Okay, good, okay.
And then we also included Henkel and Ferrera, I think was the other two that were adjacent to that. So, there was a little pocket of parcels that you decided to add.
That makes sense because there was a different family name on there, that's right. Okay, so, I'm good. I'm super excited.
The Sanguinetti Cattle Company, that's all at 943 acres and not the 1692, correct?
Right, the southern portion of it, yeah.
Okay, I haven't undertaken to double-check these, so I trust you on this.
I looked at most of them. Are you proud of me?
Yes.
And we could have some discussion about all the ones that I was in the minority of if you want to, if you want to relook at those. Any of you changed your minds?
No.
No.
We're just super excited.
So, um...
I'm sure we have public comment.
Yes, we have public comment.
Members of the public, would you like to address the latest land use map that's currently under consideration?
Colleen Platt with MyValleySprings.com and a member of the Calvers Planning Coalition. I believe you all received the letter I sent late yesterday afternoon. We would like you to take a look at three different areas. We know that all of the changes that you have made have been tentative and this is the meeting where you do get to look at anything one more time if there's an interest in doing so. We do believe there's three areas that we are concerned about and I gave you the reasons. And I pulled, I know you were concerned, Lisa, about the changes to the 1996 map versus the changes to the more recent maps. You were more concerned about those changes. So, I pulled out the parcels that, you know, were actually natural resource land in the 1996 map. So, they weren't, they were never, you know, designed to be future single-family residential or commercial or everything. So, these parcels mostly are natural resource lands or agricultural lands in the 1996 plan and under current zoning. So, I'm not arguing about different things. I'm just wanting to focus on approximately 1,500 acres, not the whole 5,000 acres that have been changed. So, I'm just looking at this, these three areas. And the reason we want to look at that is we're concerned about adequate protection for the surrounding land uses, which are mostly still in resource lands around these area, the surrounding property owners who haven't really been adequately noticed of these significant changes on these parcels, the open space values and the critical habitat values of these properties we've separated out. So, that's why we're asking for reconsideration. The first area of concern is the 12 parcels that were changed to commercial recreation designation, excuse me. These parcels amount to approximately 461 acres. The bulk of these is located in the Vallesito area, south of Vallesito, and the rest is located outside of Mountain Ranch.
Is this all the Fairchild?
These are all the, yeah, the Fairchild, what's the name of, Sierra Nevada, something like that.
Recor.
Recor. These owners also own in both of those locations an additional 117 acres in Mountain Ranch and 165 acres in Vallesito that were already designated commercial recreation. So, these were in addition to those parcels. So, if you add all of this acreage that was actually changed from the 1996 plan, you've got about 743 acres. And the reason this is significant in our way of looking at this is they were changed from resource lands to a commercial recreation designation, excuse me, which allows for a much higher building intensity. This is the potential for destination resorts, transient lodging with timeshare condos, RV parks, hotels, retail services and other support services. So, you're changing from resource production to something that's potentially a very high-density It just seems a little inappropriate, the scale here. We're talking, you gave them all of the 12 parcels they were asking for at the very first meeting rather than kind of going through that carefully and looking at which parcels might be more appropriate for this, which parcels maybe could be changed to a park and recreation designation, which would allow passive recreation versus active hotel services, this sort of thing. So, we would just ask that you maybe revisit that and look at those parcels before making that final. Again, the option that we're suggesting is that maybe not all of those 12 parcels needed to be changed to commercial recreation, which allows that huge intensity. Possibly some could be left in resource production or possibly some could be changed to park and recreation, which does allow for recreational use and facilities, but it doesn't allow for that building intensity on all those acreage. So, that's the first area. Can I still have time to talk about the other two areas also?
Yeah, and in fact, maybe if you...
Or do you want to just stop at one?
Might be better, just to address Colleen's request now and then go to the next one rather than lump them all.
It's fine with me.
I would prefer to do that.
I am not opposed to her having her moment at the mic. She sat through every hearing with us.
But I'm not opposed to you addressing them one by one rather than having it all piled on top of you two.
And then you could come back.
Okay.
That works for me. Does it work for you?
Yes.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, I'll come back on the next one.
Okay. So, discussion about Colleen's?
Okay, so I'm looking at it and in 1996, it was NRL.
Well, so, what parcels are we talking about specifically?
We are talking about 66030.
Wait, 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 let me get there.
There you are.
Okay. So, it's 283335? 3760?
And then 18 and 43 also, 17, 18, 43. There are several parcels there. I believe, gotcha.
Right.
So, in draft three, they were RTB. Okay, 3760 and 61 were RP, resource production.
Vallesito, okay.
And we went with CR, which would be the commercial recreation. Most of that, and I know Mr. Fairchild, when he was here, agreed with us, most of that's canyon. A lot of that land is big canyon. It's not gonna ever be developed, period. It won't be. Are you trying to pull up a map, Peter?
Yes.
We were looking at both.
That it shouldn't be that designation.
What he was trying, but it had to be in order to do what he wanted to do. He wanted to put the hiking trails through it, the horse trails, he wanted to...
Zip lines.
He wanted zip lines.
That could be park and recreation, not commercial. That could be park and recreation, all that can be...
Again, you'd have to come up to the microphone.
Sorry.
So, I mean, I think there is some validity to that.
That's why we were suggesting park and recreation.
If it's a steep canyon and you want to do recreational activities on it, well, I think that the land use should be appropriate to the type of land of potential use, zip lines, hiking, mountain biking, which I think parks...
He was gonna do campgrounds. There was a lot.
I think...
He was gonna do RV parks.
Right.
There was so much. And I asked him to put Disneyland in, I remember that now. So, Peter, without looking at...
And I will admit, that was the first one out of the chute. You know, I think we got much better at, just in terms of analysis. At least, actually, I would personally...
He had all these activities in mind, but he wanted someplace for him to be able to sleep.
Well, I'm fine with that. I'm just saying some of these...
This is true, and also there was a time for public comment during this and it was an issue that could have been brought up while, I'm not saying you're wrong by any means, Colleen, but it's an issue that could have been brought up while I was here so he could address and recant on what you have to say.
I have a reason for that too because that was at the very first meeting when you guys were going to go through the list very methodically and you didn't. You jumped all over the county and you approved things without anybody being aware that this was really gonna happen.
So, they weren't really prepared to know where we were gonna go.
We were not, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. It was a little, we weren't as the well-oiled machine we are now.
And I did get up and at that actual, that discussion, I got up and say, you didn't even describe what commercial recreation was before making that decision.
She did.
I said that.
I have a question. Did this message that came to us to request these changes from tentative decisions, was that sent to Fairchild?
No, I don't have his address. I just sent it to the...
So, as far as Mr. Fairchild knows, he knows nothing about this request from MyValleySprings.com at this hearing.
That's correct, but he made a request and we were just asking you to reconsider it. You have the parameters to do that.
Is the same thing true with respect to Castle and Cook and Dave Haley and Jenny Rydell?
These are, again, reconsiderations. The idea of pulling the specific plan back from the aquatic resources actually was mentioned during that discussion, but it was briefly mentioned and I wanted you to reconsider that idea. That's just was pulling back that boundary from the aquatic resources on...
My question is whether these people, Castle and Cook, Dave Haley, Jenny Rydell, got copies of your request to us?
I can't answer that.
But you didn't send it to them?
No, I don't have their contact information, no. Planning might have sent it to them, but I don't know. Some of these issues like the critical habitat, we weren't aware of. We looked at the critical habitat on the Sanguinetti parcel. It's most of the mountain, the whole thing. So, you did have a discussion about how steep the mountain was and how inappropriate it was for a lot of development. And then we came back and we saw just now the plans for that parcel and the amount of development on that parcel. And there's no requirement or anything specifying open space and the applicant did say, the applicant's representative did represent that they were going to have a certain amount of open space. There's nothing in the future specific plan that says that. They could sell that parcel tomorrow to somebody and there you go. You have not protected that property the way that the applicant represented that project.
So, well, let me just ask this. Is there any consensus on the commission to reconsider the tentative recommendation to the board on the Fairchild commercial recreation part?
I don't think we should do that without having Steve here look at the other side.
I think that we could do that and then invite Steve, you know, on the other side, but...
And the others too.
And the others too. I'm just asking, is there, but I'm not gonna do that if there's no...
I personally think that we had those hearings and if we had multiple hearings after Fairchild so that if people wanted to come and contest that decision, they had meeting after meeting after meeting to come and contest it. I, as far as looking at the Sawmill, the Sanguinetti, all of those properties that we're referencing here today, I think we looked at them pretty heavily. If, I think the appropriate place for these items to be brought up is gonna be in front of the Board of Supervisors, with these people being contacted and telling them that it's going to be brought up and it's gonna be looked at one last time in front of the supervisors, we said every...
we said every time we voted, it was tentative, that it still has to go through the supervisors. And if you're going to change something that happened while that representative for that property was here, or request those changes, they should be here to represent themselves. And I think, I think that the opportunity for that, as we've said all along, would be in front of the supervisors, with the people being contacted and told. They may need to appear that one last time.
Well, I would just say, in fairness, the, like, My Valley Springs didn't know that some of these qualifications that regarding the, I guess it's the Sanguinetti, or conditions, weren't going to be on the future-specific plan. I think maybe they felt like that would be, would be some conditions placed on this future-specific plan definition for that property. So they, they didn't know that it wasn't going to be, and they think, I think they thought that it was going to be.
Well, the, all we did was create a new specific plan category. It wasn't meant to have criteria for specific parcels.
Yes, it does.
That will be done, that will be done when somebody comes up with a specific plan, as I understand it. Then they're going to have to deal with what mitigation has to be done and all the rest of it.
But there is criteria for those.
That's what I'm saying, there is criteria.
And we, there is parameters, there- They were just not as thorough as we expected on the parcel.
Right, but that's as far as we went.
But we're just saying that we were just asking if those parameters could be a little bit more specific on. I remember you asked Lisa specifically, you said 30 to 40 percent open space, is that all you can do on this parcel? And Ron Koff said, actually, that's not even counting the recreational and golf open space. So they intended to go way more than 50 percent or whatever of open space, but that is not reflected here. So if somebody else buys the property, they have nothing that says they have to do that.
But the other thing that we discussed in that process was, and until they go and they do all of their environmental reports, they're not going to know what areas are sensitive, can't build on, and by us getting too much-
I'm not saying, I'm not saying to be that specific. I'm just saying this general parameter of, a certain percentage of open space was represented. Now, the EIR has to study, it can't study only a certain percentage of open space being left open. It has to figure, maybe they're going to build over the whole thing, because there's nothing on here that says that.
And that's where the EIR will address environmentally?
But you're asking it to do more than the applicant even wanted to do. He wanted to do-
She's referring to the general plan EIR, I believe?
Right, right, I'm sorry. Yeah, the general plan EIR, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The general plan EIR now will be obligated to address-
Look at the maximum development potential.
The maximum development of that whole parcel, because you have not specified that you expect 50 percent of it to be left alone. So you're forcing the general plan EIR to evaluate and costs of that impacts. More things that probably won't happen, because that hasn't been called out here.
This is, and I hate to go backwards in time by eight months, but this is where I said on, when I look at that map as a whole, Fawn has one she can hold up for me, because she brought it.
Oh.
Did you bring, you brought your map?
Just a little one?
That thing. When you look at that map, and you look at the, good job, Peter, and you look, there's a Vanna here, and you look at the previous maps, we are, we gave back so little compared to what we took from this county. We turned everything resource production. I am stunned when I look at the difference in the map of how much we took back. I don't think that we're going to be evaluating hardly anything compared to what existed. It is, I mean, I, you know, when Fawn says, "Do we want to take a look at a few of mine?" I'm like, "No, but would you really like to look at opening back up what I want to do?" And she's going to say, "No." I feel like we found a happy medium in this road. I know you have concerns about the cost for that specific project, but I think, I think we closed up a lot of development in this property. We, we opened up a teeny bit from draft three to draft four, in my opinion, when you look at the amount of acreages that we did close up into resource production. I'm going to stand on my votes previous and my position. I think that if these issues need to be revisited, I think it needs to be done with the supervisors and the property owners being contacted. You know how I've said that in the past, the property owner should have a right to debate when someone's taking and dealing with their property. So I really feel like they should be contacted. They should all be brought forward, they should sit before the Board of Supervisors, and you, and your letter, and your map, and explanations, and, I mean, I don't think that meeting is going to be a short meeting. I think that's going to be a long, 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 long meeting. But I do think those owners deserve the right to know someone was back in here appealing to us what was already decided. That's how I feel. You all can-
I would like to concur with Lisa, and furthermore, part of this specific plan here is Oak Canyon, and that will be a conservancy possibly in the future, most likely. And there was a significant amount of building taken out of the general plan when it came to that, suffice me for part of what you're talking about. Now, and I do understand your concerns, and I do see them as somewhat legitimate. I don't, and I'm not here to argue with you about those at all. I, but I do concur with Lisa that I think the supervisor meeting would be a better place so that they, that possibly Peter can make sure that the three people that you're going to address that letter to, because that's another point for public comment. I am not in favor for delaying this any more than it has for the past 12 years. And that's where I stand with that.
On, on the Sawmill Lake property, it seems to me that the issues you have there with respect to the aquatic resources and critical habitat area will have to be dealt with down the road. I mean, that's very specific concerns. I don't think that needs to be dealt with here. He's going to run into that when he tries to develop it, no matter what. And it'll be what it's going to be, it'll be a 200-foot setback or whatever comes out of that. On the Sanguinetti, I guess my question is, exactly what is it that you would like just to add as a, as a condition, if you will, or a part of a description of what this is? And my next question will be to Peter is, how much difference will that make in terms of the cost and so forth of doing the general plan EIR?
Okay. First point is that all of these reflect to the costs of the general plan EIR, not just the Sanguinetti. We're concerned about all of them having to study potential impacts that may not happen, but the EIR has to study the possibility of what these designations allow. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then under Sanguinetti, our suggestions under Sanguinetti was, A, to, because of the concerns about, the concerns that we raised earlier, reduce the density and intensity of the development allowed, or spec, and specify the percentage of open space to remain, for example, 50 percent minimum open space. Or pull, if you look on the map, that entire table, and I sent you an endangered species habitat map. If you look at that Table Mountain, that Table Mountain is entirely in that area. So one option would be to pull that out of the, out of the specific plan designation, and put it into the park and recreation designation, which allows recreational uses without allowing buildings. So that's, that's the difference. You can have your recreational uses, your golf course, your open space, your trails, without having condos and, and that sort of thing on there. So that was one option to reduce that impact. And again, we're just looking at the realistically, what I agree, that down the road in an EIR, it's probably not going to let you do that. But you're requiring the general plan EIR now to look at all the potential of doing development all over, all of that property. So this would be one way to pull that back into something more of a reasonable expectation of what might actually happen on the property. Does that answer your question?
When you suggest reduce the density and intensity of development allowed specifically, what would you change?
Well, I was looking at the figures above there when the applicant had represented that they were planning 1,300 to 1,500 homes. And then we end up with the figures above that are 900 single-family residential units, 550 vacation timeshare units, 350 lodging units, 100 space RV park, and 70,000 square feet commercial space, totaling 1,900 residential and transient units. That seemed excessive over what the applicant had represented, so I didn't know that you necessarily had to give them everything they were asking for. I thought you had the option to, you know, choose an amount that you thought was suitable. So that was my suggestion on that.
Well, he said 1,300 to 1,500 homes, et cetera. And when I look at the footnote, it's 900 plus 550, which is 1,450. So that's consistent with what he said.
Yeah, if you don't add all the other things.
Okay, what else would you change?
Pardon me?
In terms, it seems to me that what, what is in footnote two here is consistent with what Mr. Koff said. Now, in terms of the percentage of open space, you've suggested 50 percent minimum?
The, yes, the applicant suggested they would be providing 30 to 40 percent open space plus the open recreational uses of golf course, so that seemed like a reasonable estimate, 30 to 40 percent plus golf courses and trails, open space. He said, he said that was in addition to their open space recreational uses.
And see, though, when we, I started talking about, then I understand what you're saying, Colleen, I really do. But when we start changing what the decisions we've already made, we're telling-
But those were tentative decisions, remember?
I understand. They're, but they're tentative decisions that the owner left here understanding. And when we start, when we started looking at projects, we had to pull back and say, "Oh, my gosh, we're not here to define a project." And when you're saying include the golf courses, you're defining the project. And that's what we tried to get away from, because they could change their mind. They may not do three resorts, they may do one and 200 condos and 300 homes, and it's done. It may be all they can do, once they start finding out where their sensitive use areas are, tabletop being a perfect example. I just think we're getting into too much of defining their project, and they, they, I don't, I don't know that we want to go that far into it. We're not here to define a project as much as we are to say that this is your land use, and you are planning to do a resort here. You and I both know there's going to be a lot of area in there that's going to be held back and steady, but if we limit them ahead of time, we're taking away their ability for their development. And I don't want to do that. I think in the specific plan, we were, we were pretty, pretty defined, matching what you said here.
Except for the 30 to 40 percent open space, which is not reflected at all in there. And that was the applicant's actual statement.
Okay, question for Peter. If you, if we put in, pick your number, 30 to 40, 50 percent open space to number two, involving Sanguinetti, what difference, if any, would that make in terms of the general plan EIR process being easier?
That's a good question.
Probably very limited. And we wouldn't know what portion of property would be, would be open space. We would have to do, well, here's the areas we've identified for future development. There are resources there. The EIR is looking at the potential impact of that with mitigation measures, and then those mitigation measures would be applied to the future projects. So we said, and we've got, you know, similar situations elsewhere where there are rare endangered species, whether it's frogs, or saplings, or plants, or whatever it might be out there. There will be a potential conflict of development with endangered species. And so programmatically, the measures, some that we adopted already, we will avoid those. That's always policy. And that may be sufficient to mitigate those impacts. The EIR may bring out all those other things we could do to further mitigate them. But they're not going to say, "That area is off limits." It's not going to be that level of detail. So, we're coming to suggesting, yes, consistent with what Mr. Koff said, it would help to probably frame any future development that, you know, in addition to all these, you know, things that could be developed here, what we also have to provide is part of the future project. So there's, you know, potential benefit to having that. But as far as the impact of EIR, I think you have a significant benefit.
So Colleen's concerns about cost on these three projects that we have before us that she's concerned about, are they real? Are they big?
Certainly, if we identify areas for some future development that is not likely to occur, requiring a significant amount of additional analysis, you'll have some critique from the cost increase. The greater cost is in identifying mitigation. So if we have an area where we're going to identify where, you know, a lot of future development, and I think one that probably is most concerning in this regard would be the commercial recreation, any area that may or may not really warrant that level of development. That could increase, you know, load group of costs, infrastructure costs, or then boring by any development that happens in that area. If that area is really going to develop, if you have a plan for that development, there's inconsistency between the potential of the group that we're seeing have to be done, and are those all cost analysis of what's it going to take to widen territory for length, for example? If that development ever occurred, even though we sort of incorporated those potential costs into our future road fee program, or whatever other mitigation that we have for impact to there, then that could particularly increase costs. We really won't know until we do the analysis. What I care to say is, if we don't need to do that analysis, because it's really not realistic that we're going to analyze, how it really increases the level of natural development, then why are we going to analyze it? And that's, I think, the sort of the constant theme that I've said all along, is that we need to scale back the amount of potential development this is going to come. So we want to provide enough flexibility, but not so much that it overwhelms the demand to the word, we're analyzing something that's going to happen, leaving out the other kind of this part. So, but as far as the specifics of, you know, where impact might occur, that's not what we're looking at, which you can refer to general plan EIR. Programmatically, yes, we'll be having areas, we have to analyze the development with roads, that's sort of site-specific kind of things. If they got traffic, traffic sheds, is it because of allowing this much development here, that's going to impact these roads here? So we're not going to get that, this specific project, or project at this particular location may affect, you know, these various endangered species, or these particular, that, I don't know.
I think it's more specific with when they start to move forward with the projects.
And then obviously, we have to look very carefully at the site-specific issues associated with that.
So your biggest concern about anything she brought up would have been the Parrot's Ferry Road area?
Yes, given, given the, well, I think that the potential development at the Sanguinetti property, you know, it has potential impacts on, on, over the period of, there's a period of cost, and also impacts on the county. That's on the, on the county, certainly the coastal.
Yeah, right.
What would you, you're, you're not looking at how it affects their roads in their county. But that's part of the analysis, yeah, to go through.
I have one suggestion on the two footnotes that deal with the specific plans. Shouldn't we be saying a maximum of 580 total units and a maximum of 900, et cetera?
Well, I say that when we, the light about that, maximum density and intensity of development.
Okay, you think that, that covers it? Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for, for listening, but that did clarify that I, it does reiterate our concerns of that amount of acreage for commercial recreation affecting, like, Parrot's Ferry Road when it may not happen, but the EIR has to study the impacts of all of that acreage happening on Parrot's Ferry Road, in circulation.
It did, and we heard that two different ways. You heard it your way, I just heard it.
Okay.
So, Colleen, we have to find some middle ground here between us. He said it wouldn't be that much of an impact, so-
Oh, to the cost of the EIR?
To the cost, okay. Okay.
Right.
So, just for clarity purposes, there's the impact of looking at the roads, but not so much in the cost. And that's a state highway, and like he said, Highway 49, Parrot's Ferry.
Not Parrot's Ferry, no, that's a county road.
Highway 49.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
Yeah, but that turns, that's Highway 49.
No, the cross is 49.
Not until you get to Sonora? Okay. Okay, so, still, the developer would impore those costs, not the county. If their development was, if he starts developing and that had to go to four lanes wide, that cost would go on that developer. He's going to be responsible for the infrastructure in and out of there.
Ultimately, yes, and what, what happens is that, because of the potential future growth, this would occur anywhere, we've identified a significant area to future growth, there's traffic that was able to back up, and that's going to affect the road, and you've got standards that you need to maintain a road path, see your means-
Right.
...go around. If the level of development pushes that amount of traffic, or it's, you know, drops its LLS, that means mitigate that slightly a little, so you have to add the whole lane, and so the costs of that are much greater, because you can't just sort of have incremental increase in, in two lanes for life. And so, when you have a slight increase over the level of service, it means a significant increase in costs, and so that has increased overall the cost for all development, because it's, ultimately, this road has to go to four lanes, so everyone's going to have to pay for it, impacts it, so here's your fair share. But if a few projects haven't paid their fair share, but the big projects that were planned on, never really happened, then we're overcharging, over, overplanning the roads or stuff, so it ends up costing the developers more than what it actually would cost if we had a more accurate assessment of what future growth is going to be.
Well, you know, Mr. Fairchild, I think if we contacted him before the supervisors' meeting and said, hey, Mr. Fairchild, where would your actual commercial take place, and where you think you're only going to have trails and RV, could we put it parks and recreation to cut back and minimize some of this when we go to the supervisors' meeting? I think you would find him to be real reasonable. I felt good about working with him on wanting to bring more recreation to the county and more of that commercial aspect. I mean, he sat right there and said, I employ eighty-eight people in this county, not many people do that. He is a taxpaying contributor to this county, and he is making things happen, he's adding on, he's providing tourism, and people, even local people are enjoying the heck out of that place, and the more he adds to it, I think we bring more into our county because of it. But I really feel that if we contacted him before it goes to the supervisors and say, this is what Colleen's proposing, could you be a little bit more specific and let go of some of that commercial and take it into the parks and recs? I bet you he'd be so agreeable. I think he's that kind of guy.
I'd have to comment, you know, like that already.
I'll call him. You call him, you're smarter.
And, and I would really support that, because I think all of my yes votes, which I wasn't supportive of that, that's the one I would, I would want to revisit, well, because all of the other ones on your list I didn't support anyway, but that one, I would, I would, I think it's, I think it's legitimate and reasonable, and I would support, yeah.
I think we call him. I think, Peter, you said you already made a note. I think we call him, let him know, but before the sort of supervisors' meeting, would you be able to consider doing parks and recs in some of these areas? Then when it comes forward, maybe Colleen doesn't even have to get up and say anything, because you're able to announce that we have one little change that we'd like you supervisors to approve.
Or they're just already, he changes it, and it's, there's no discussion.
Well, there would have to be, because we're sending it forward as this, and the supervisors would have to say, yes, we will adopt it. I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. I think you're going to find him to be really workable.
I would, I would-
He does provide a lot of positive, natural recreational activities in our county, and yes, there's no-
I'm not, there's not argument about it, I think, at all.
But if we could reduce some of what he-
We're just concurring with each other.
Especially, you know, we're talking steep canyons, there's not going to be a resort hotel there, so, you know, I, it's just, I think it's appropriate.
Thank you for the suggestion, Lisa, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple comments.
I think we're still on public comment.
Yes.
Oh, are we? Okay, go ahead.
This has been an excellent conversation, great exercise. I just wanted to say that while we may find that the cost is not unsurmountable or whatever, not huge dollars, it is a cumulative thing. So, as we look at all the different projects and things that we approve or, or agree to and everything, I think we have to remember the word cumulative, so this is really good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, Kelly?
Okay, reviewing again My Valley Springs communication, the point is made that the tentative decisions are allowing development in areas previously designated nineteen ninety-six natural resource lands or currently zoned agriculture.
Right.
That's true, but the flip side of that is, a great, much more acreage got flipped the other way, from future single-family residence, five-acre minimum, to resource production, probably a hundred times as much.
More.
So, I don't think that comment is, carries much weight with me. With respect to Fairchild, I think that's been adequately covered, and you'll probably get self-worked out. With respect to Sawmill Lake, I stand by my comment that I think the concerns there will be addressed in a specific plan, it will have to be. And with respect to Sawmill Lake and Sanguinetti, I think it's now clear to me that the incremental cost of not including some further restriction on how much open space has to be there is not going to be very much, and so I'm prepared to stand with the tentative decisions that we made on all three parcels, all three areas.
Okay, I'm, I'm willing to stand on all of them too, but I do like the recommendation of Peter contacting Fairchild, seeing if he'll bring some of it back to parks and recreation, and I'm going to stand on that.
Okay, so it looks like this graphland use map is the planning commission's recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
So, we have a motion?
Okay.
Could my question be answered before we do?
Uh, oh, I don't really-
Yes, so, we recommend that the board recommends to the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Supervisors, to set the draft general plan, so text and any stamp, as modified by the commission during the hearing span in August two thousand and fifteen.
Didn't we start before August on the map? Seems like it.
We're going back to the two thousand and fifteen, following during-
Oh, two thousand and fifteen, I'm like, didn't it?
Now that she interrupted you, could you start, no, I'm kidding.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you can, you can start where you left off.
Through September two thousand and sixteen, as a project description for the purposes of preparing the environmental impact of the project.
And so moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Where's my confetti?
Your what?
Confetti.
Where's the fireworks?
So, next is our public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry.
Grab this up, there is a, it's going to be scheduled by twenty-nine point nine percent year, August, October fourth, special for B, and then we'll be taking this here.
Oh, and we are allowed to attend as long as we don't speak in case it comes back to us, correct?
Um-
That's what I was told.
Okay, that's your call, and I don't know if you're on-
By legal counsel.
Any, anything else?
But all I have is none.
Okay, and so before we get to public comment, I will not be at the next planning commission meeting, but I'm sure you guys can carry on, because it's probably not general plan related and-
Does Ted get your gavel?
Yes, he does. Yeah, so just to let you know. We got a big agenda?
We're not meeting on the twenty-nine, right?
So, we're going to-
It's October-
I imagine we'll have some more appeals.
Okay.
I'll always flagrant reject it.
Okay, good enough. So, now is our public comment period? Anyone want to address the planning commission on an item, land use item, not on our agenda? No? Good.
Really?
Not that we didn't want to hear from you, but good, it's four-thirty.
After all of that, thirteen minutes.
So, with that-
And you did your job well done.
Thank you. If there's no other business, the meeting's adjourned.